The Oakley City Council Meeting is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, in the highest principle, liberty, justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Yes.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emmanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer? Klinkhammer? Lor? Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Jong?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
I'm here.
Lor?
I'm here.
All right, thank you. We have everyone joining us this evening. Again, I want to welcome those that are participating with this meeting virtually and remotely. It is appreciated. This is our Monday, July 13 virtual meeting of the Oakley City Council. I want to extend a sincere welcome to all of you again joining us. And again, those of you that would like to address the city council, just a reminder that you must join the meeting as an attendee on a computer, a tablet, or a smartphone using the link provided and using the link provided on the city website. The Oakley City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on important decisions that we'll be making later this evening or in our legislative session in the coming weeks or months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. To watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. It is also simulcast at 101.9 FM. And you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Chippewa Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present on that item. And following that presentation, the council may have questions to clarify an issue. We then open the item for public input. Once the item is open for comment, please raise your hand on the WebEx screen alerting me that you wish to speak to this agenda item. And I will call on you in the order in which the requests to speak are received. When it is your turn to comment, I will unmute you and ask you to please state your name and your address and to begin sharing your comments. We welcome you to speak for five minutes. And I will notify you when there's only one minute left to speak. When you've reached five minutes, I will then ask that you bring your statement to a close. I will then ask you to lower your hand and you will then be muted. But are welcome to stay online to listen in to the rest of the meeting or share another comment during our public comment period. There are times when council members will ask you follow-up questions, so please give us a moment before disconnecting. Again, if you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. And lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking in public, you can fill out a comment form on the city website. And those comments will be shared with council members ahead of our legislative meeting tomorrow. As always, you can email or call council members outside of our meeting. And our contact information can be found on the city website. With that introduction, we'll get on to our first order of business. There's one item scheduled for a public hearing on tonight's agenda, a public discussion on the concept plan for Boyd Park developed by the City of Oakley and Eastside Hill Neighborhood Association in conjunction with Ayers and Associates. Good evening, Mr. Plaza.
Good evening, Council President Weld and council members. In 2018, the Community Service Department and Eastside Hill Neighborhood embarked on a collaborative design effort to reimagine and identify the future of one of Oakley's most iconic neighborhood parks, Boyd Park. This joint effort was initiated and formalized through a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between the city and the Eastside Hill Neighborhood Group. This MOU approved by the city council in September 2018 helped to formalize the process and ensure both parties were on the same page. The agreement states that all improvements that are in our enhancements over standard neighborhood park features will be funded 100% by the association and no construction will progress without the funds available. The Eastside Hill Neighborhood Association, in conjunction with Ayers Associates, created a concept plan for Boyd Park in accordance with the MOU with the city. This plan was presented to and approved by the Waterways and Park Commission on June 23, 2020. The first of five community concept planning meetings was held in the park on August 13, 2019. Throughout the entire process, there was a cross-section of interested groups involved in the process from skateboarders, prairie folks, bikers, walkers, and neighborhood individuals who just wanted to improve the park. These five formal community meetings, the Waterways and Park Commission meeting, plus several informal meetings between neighbors, has resulted in the conceptual plan you see today. Please remember that this is a concept plan and prior to any improvements, the Neighborhood Association will need to raise 100% of the funds. The improvements will need to be approved by the city council at the time of construction. The concept plan is just a roadmap for future improvements and changes can be made upon approval of the Neighborhood Association and city council. This is a living document that can be adjusted if needed to benefit all parties involved. This plan shows all the current and future expansion features included, but not limited to the active lawn area, adventure playground, nature-based areas, community pavilion, hammock lounge, solar shades, bike-walking paths, viewing areas, and the skate plaza. The neighborhood has strong feelings on retaining the ice rink. A 5,200-square-foot ice rink will remain with a path from the Mormon house to the rink. Bike parking will also be located close to the playground and sports courts. The exact locations will be determined during the planning phase for construction. Opportunities and strengths for bike and pedestrian circulations were discussed and reviewed at every stage of the process. An additional sidewalk along the west side of Summer Street is being added to allow for safer pedestrian circulation to the pedestrian bridge. Handicap ramps and extended sidewalk trail is being added at the intersection of East Grand Avenue and McGraw Street to allow for more accessible circulation through the park. The intersections of the trail north of the tunnel is being moved away from the tunnel to improve sightlines and decrease pedestrians and bicycle conflict. The trail running east-west through the park, through the middle of the park, is meant to encourage bicycles to take an alternative travel route, which will decrease the conflicts. Trails running along the river and through the park are meandering and constrained to help encourage bicycles to slow down, similar to how bumpouts slow down vehicles in traffic. Adjacent to the trail, adjustments to the trail at the intersection of Fairway Street and the trail running east-west through the park could be adjusted to encourage and improve the circulation. The pedestrian crossing at Fairway and Summer and McGraw and East Grand will be part of the city's future CIP program and also have been identified in the Safe Routes to Parks Plan. A tabletop intersection may be looked at these locations to slow traffic and increase safety. Thank you for the opportunity to present this concept plan to you tonight. Our consultants from Ayers Associates, Chris Solinsky and myself, are available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plaza. Does Mr. Solinsky have any comments that he would like to share first?
Chris, would you like to share something?
One moment.
Chris, are you there?
I think I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
Awesome. The only thing I'll share and add to what Steve is, is first of all, Steve, bravo, that was really well said. I think you basically covered everything. A couple of things I'll add to it is through the whole process, we tried to dive deep into what are the goals and aspirations. And a lot of what we came up with, that's the intent of it, is connecting people within the East Hill neighborhood to the nature that's along the riparian corridor that's there, the prairie, the trees, the river, finding opportunities for places where people can connect with nature better, but also learn about nature. So there's informative signage around the prairie, there's informative center on the river, opportunities to see Boyd Park in a different lens. So that's the only thing I'll add, but Steve, bravo, that was very well said.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you very much. I am so excited. I used to live in that neighborhood and it is an iconic park. And this is going to make it so much more livable and enjoyable. I want to just ask you about one point in your presentation when you said each subsequent construction item will come in front of council. I'm assuming that that would only be if it's a change to this plan? Or is everything going to continue to come in front of council for approval during the development of the park?
Right now, once they raise money and a construction document is proposed, it'll come in front of the council. They could raise money in phases just for one or two aspects, or they could raise money for the entire plan. It's actually up to the Neighborhood Association to see how they want to progress. They took the initiative, the Boyd Plus Plan. You'll see those signs all over town. I know I did when I first moved here. They really took ownership of this project along with the city and we're working very well together, hand in hand. It's up to the Neighborhood Association to see how they want to progress after this. They paid for this concept plan.
So it's not an approval of the plan, but it's an approval of the work projects as they come?
Correct.
As they're funded? Thank you.
Correct, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Plaza, for your presentation. Answered a lot of my questions that I shared the email last night, so thank you. I've had some opportunities to speak with some users of the park today and get some feedback via email too. One of the questions is related to the skate park. And obviously, that's kind of another fundraising effort that is maybe suffered from Boyd Park Plus. And so maybe if you could speak to where that is at in relation to this concept plan? And also just how the square footage of that was determined and what exactly that square footage is roughly? And just how that, how that, how working with the Skaters Association or with the partners on that have kind of helped shape the location and some of the early designs of the skate plaza or skate park?
Okay, I will speak to the skate park. Chris, you might have to help me with the square footage. I don't recall that.
Yep.
But the skate park is correct. You are correct, councilman. Is a separate fundraiser. This skate plaza has been designated at Boyd Park for some years. And we also entered an agreement with the skate park representative to set aside a location once they raised, I believe, $75,000. The city contributed $25,000 and they need to raise the rest. And once that gets raised, we could go out for an RFP to see what construction costs or what items they would get. How many square feet is set aside for that skate park, Chris?
About 5,000 square feet.
And do you know how that, was that the size they were asking for?
That is roughly the size they were asking for. I believe it, we say 5,000 square feet, but it's really, you know, 5,000 to 8,000 square feet somewhere in there. During previous iterations of the design, we had brought forward three different concepts that looked at placing skate park in different locations around the park. Long story short, what we ended up settling on was the location you can see in front of you right now, which is the northwest corner of the park. The design that you see in plan view is a little bit larger than 5,000. It's probably closer to 10,000 square feet. If you were to look at some of the 3D concepts that we put together in your presentation package, that's more representational to the 5,000 square feet, which is really a skate plaza, not necessarily a skate park. And I will say that the group that is fundraising for the skate park did a good job of showing up at some of these public engagement meetings and trying to portray the skate park in a very positive sense, which I feel like came over very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one follow-up question.
Certainly.
On a different subject, but I guess I'm just trying to get my terminology straight here. So this is being referred to as a concept plan? What is the difference between like a master plan and a concept plan? Is a master plan a bit more fine-grained? Or I guess I'm trying to figure out what the difference is.
A master plan would be less detailed, actually. A concept plan is a little bit more solidified than a master plan. And it should be stated that we are, the plan that you're looking at in front of you, the Boyd Park group would like to move forward with fundraising for it. And what we're seeking is approval to take this plan so that we can do some fundraising, whether it's grants, which we do con jointly with you, or we do donor solicitation. That answered Jeremy?
Yeah, I think so. I guess, you know, I've only really seen this one really big drawing. Is there some sort of report or something that goes into more detail?
Did you receive the package with a 3D image?
We didn't, those were too large to email, but we do have it here available.
Is it at all possible that we could go through those real quick, Steve?
Yep, yes, we can.
Okay, that would be great.
Councilmember Gregor, maybe if we could come back to your question while Ms. Meroll works on getting it loaded?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions from council?
So I can, Steve, would you like me to talk to these? I can do that, that's good.
Yeah, you can talk to those. You were at all of the meetings.
Okay. So before we get to the 3D portion, there's a little bit of history involved here. This is the first public input session that we went to at the Boyd Park, the Eastside Picnic. Just keep going down right there. If you look real close, I'm pretty sure Jeremy is in the blue shirt on the top left. And then right in the middle at the bottom there. We got some phenomenal feedback here, not only with the dot mark to see boards along the outside, but with the chalkboard. It's a good amount more slack this, to what we heard. There was a lot of conversations that was had between not only me as a designer and the neighborhood, but also neighbors in general, talking about what inspirations, what they would like to see. The one that gets to me is sort of down center, bottom center, where it says "real unicorns," which I think is awesome. We didn't incorporate any real unicorns into the design to get an idea of all the creativity that went into the visioning process. So you can go down to the next one. These are some of the boards that we had at those presentations. We looked at what are some of the historical elements that we'd like to pull into the park, native ecology, historic architecture, typologies. And then keep going down, please. The circles on some of these represent the number of votes that were at the East Hill Picnic. Some of the major ones that we had were movie nights, summer picnics. What we basically heard was that we want, we want flexibility as things start to progress and East Hill starts to engage with this park more and more. So opportunities for group fitness, adventure play, winter activities, we're all supposed to be considered, including right down bottom center, engaging with your environment. So from there, we developed inventory and analysis, which is the next. That inventory and analysis started to dive into lots of opportunities and constraints of the site that are, as we say, so that we don't miss anything that's in place already, but also don't lose track of what the future holds. Keep going down, please. From there, we developed a series of goals to help facilitate the decision-making process for the project. Those quoted two, environmental, social, economic, and aesthetic goals. They really encompassed what we had before from the East Hill Picnic, plus the opportunities and constraints diagrams that were put together. Keep going down, please. And then all of that was put together to help facilitate a discussion about park program and what are some of the things we would like to see into this park that fit with the goals that were previously discussed and made available by the East Hill Picnic, plus other input sessions. You can keep going down for sake of time. From there, we looked at variety of options. These are the options that I had discussed earlier where we talked about the skate park location in relationship to other uses and surrounding neighbors. These drawings were presented at one of the public input meetings, I believe, on October 15th to help gain feedback. So from all of these, President Image Board, Dolly's concept, we were able to boil down what we felt was a pretty strong and compelling design that got a lot of feedback from neighbors, but it also meets the desired goals that were put together early on. Keep going down, please. Here's another one of those iterations, that's side option two. That one looks at a variety of different locations of other elements. Keep going down. Keep going down. So from those three options, we went to two preferred options that looked at rather large placements of some key elements. I guess just to sum it up, the skate park and the only difference between the two is geometry and the skate park location and the playground's location. Long story short, we decided that it was ideal to try to place those playgrounds together. So those two playgrounds have different age ranges that you're trying to appeal to, 5 to 8, and then 8 to 12. And this option right there, it looks, those two options separate those two uses, which create some conflicts with families that have broader age ranges of kids. The one below brings those two together so that families can be in one space and have kids playing on multiple different elements. And then the skate park moved to the northwest on this option versus the southeast on the other option. And that was to help pull that skate park away from that regaining wall hill and make it a little bit more visible, which will help increase security and observation on that skate park, which I think helped a lot of the neighbors understand and feel more comfortable with it. And then going down to the next one, I think we just hit on, oh, I don't know if there's no 3D in this one. Okay. So I can send the 3D image package over? So you guys can see it at another time.
Jeremy, did you?
I'll try to run through that as quick as possible. Let me know if there's any questions.
That was great, thank you, Mr. Soluski. Is Jeremy, did you have any other questions?
Oh, thank you, I'm good.
Are there any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, we will open it up for public discussion. And again, those of you that wish to speak to this agenda item, this specific agenda item, please raise your hand and then I'll try and call on you in the order in which they come up on the screen. Mr. Busky? Chris, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, maybe a little bit louder or a little bit closer to your microphone, if you could.
Yeah, all right, can you hear me better?
A little better, yep.
All right, yeah, my name is Chris Busky. I live at 1039 Emery Street. I'm on the Eastside Hill Neighborhood Association. I sit on the subcommittee for Boyd Park Plus. And I just wanted to make a comment to Jeremy Gregor in regards to the skate park. The Neighborhood Association and the subcommittee have been working closely with members of the Skaters Association and communicating with each other on how we can proceed forward with both plans that are going to work in the best interest of all parties. And the Skaters Association has reassured us that they trust that we're looking out for their best interests and that they are willing to work with us in the development of the skate park or the construction of the skate park so that it doesn't interfere with the conceptual plan that we're designing there. And if that means that they need to postpone construction temporarily as we move forward so that we can do the whole project in coordination, that they are okay with doing that. So I just wanted to reassure that we are working with the Skaters Association and making sure that everybody is happy in regards to
Sure.
development of that skate park.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council, from Mr. Busky? All right, we appreciate your comments. Thanks for signing in. Are there any other comments from the public in regards to this agenda item?
There is one gentleman in the hallway that's downloading the app that would like to provide public comment, so I'm not sure what protocol is for waiting.
I guess we can wait a minute. Council, and those listening in, we just, we'll just take just a few minutes here to wait for one resident to log in that has reached out. So we could hang in there for just a little bit. Oh, okay, we could try that too. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead. Again, I'll ask one more time, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, please raise your hand now and I'll search through or scroll through the list here. Again, not seeing any. We will close the public hearing on this agenda item, this public discussion, I should say. I should say, and move on to our public commentary period. Mr. Plaza, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, have a great night. So with the introduction of the public commentary period, for those of you that wish to speak this evening during the public comment period, please click on the icon to raise your hand. I will call on you in the order in which they appear on my screen. Please state your name and city of Eau Claire address. The public comment period is for those living or working in the city of Eau Claire. Please note that your thoughts or ideas should be regarding issues or concerns of citywide application. Please do not comment on issues that were on tonight's agenda as council wants and needs to hear those comments during the noticed hearing or discussion. Also, please be aware that during this public comment period, council members are not allowed to ask questions or comment on your remarks, so please do not misinterpret our silence. We are listening. You will have three minutes to speak and I will notify when you have one minute remaining. This comment period will last for 20 minutes unless it is the wish of two-thirds of the council to extend it. Again, you're welcome to email or call us directly as well. So I will open up the public commentary period. And welcome, Ms. Wolfgram. Good evening.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Council President Wildin, members of the city council. Good evening, my name is Susan Wolfgram. I live at 550 Graham Avenue. In advance of your work session tomorrow focusing on the 2021-2025 capital improvement plan, I wanted to strongly recommend that racially diverse community members and leaders sit at the table with you prior to your vote of approval on July 28th and fully participate in the discussion, primarily but not limited to law enforcement expenditures. According to the National League of Cities, city budgets are important places to prioritize racial equity through targeted investment. Cities are both conducting regular racial equity assessments of budget decisions and making decisions driven by a desire to address inequities and systemic racism. Our community spoke starting on May 31st, the justice for George Floyd rally and during subsequent rallies in June and July. Our community has contacted their city council members in unprecedented numbers and spoke during our June 15th public hearing at Plan Commission. I myself heard from a number of community members that day prior to the hearing. My stewardship as well as others in service to our community prioritizes commitment to members who are clearly demonstrating that they seek input before any further funding to law enforcement is approved. Understanding that the Plan Commission is a recommending-only body to the city council, the commission responded to our community by approving an amendment to the capital improvement plan resolution to have a community engagement session with our racially diverse community leaders before the council votes to approve on July 28th. On June 2nd, both Matt Rokas, Chief of Police, and Dale Peters, our city manager, stated in a leader telegram editorial that they prioritize earning the trust of all residents and they welcome opportunities to strengthen relationships with our community. This is one of those opportunities. On June 9th, our city council passed a resolution denouncing the murder of George Floyd and all forms of brutality, racism, hatred, and bigotry. Stakeholder buy-in is critical moving forward. From my perspective, a resolution is an organic living document demonstrated in action. A budget, this capital improvement project plan is also a living document, a kind of social contract between our city government and its stakeholders, our residents. One value that stands out in Eau Claire, which motivates me to be involved in city government, is the value placed on participatory civic engagement. Tokenism is the practice of making only a perfunctory or symbolic effort to be inclusive to members of underrepresented groups in order to give the appearance of, in this case, racial equity in city government. We risk tokenizing participation by underrepresented communities by only receiving comments or one-to-one conversations. We move beyond tokenism by transforming the traditional majority narrative and be guided by community members seated at the table that are most directly impacted by law enforcement practice and policy. We have an opportunity in our city's history to continue our progressive and inclusive trajectory, particularly this past two years, of suspending traditional practice and acting on increasing participatory local government by outreach to racially diverse community members to guide the discussion on the law enforcement expenses in the capital improvement plan before your vote on July 28th. I thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfgram. Kayla?
Hi, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yes, um, Matt, Kayla Rick, my address is 3348 Morgan Avenue. Um, city council members, I'd like to speak on item 18 on tomorrow's agenda. There is a resolution to adopt a statement encouraging face coverings in the city of Eau Claire. Your statement says we wear masks because we are faced with the task of slowing the spread of COVID-19, and with wearing masks, we can make a difference in the health and welfare of our families, friends, and coworkers. These statements and others in your formal statement, while well-intended, are based on the assumptions that, one, the virus spreads asymptomatic, two, masks prevent the spread, and, three, wearing a mask is a public statement in support of caring about others. I would urge you to consider points that directly conflict with those basic assumptions. On June 1st, the Association of American Physicians and Surgeons released results in a study that tested the efficiency of popular masks. The SARS virus that can cause COVID-19 is .125 micrometers in size. Filter efficiency was measured across a range of small particulate sizes within that range. They concluded that wearing a mask is ineffective at preventing the spread of this virus. Cloth masks provided nearly no filtration, and wearing a mask could increase the risk of bacterial infections in the wearer. On June 8th, Maria Van Kirkhoe from the World Health Organization stated that contact tracing efforts have found asymptomatic spread is very rare. The focus should be on symptomatic cases. Multiple sources have made similar claims. We often ask ourselves, why are we talking about increasing restrictions and recommendations when the death rate is declining despite an increase in cases? It is unrealistic to assume we can get to zero. Dr. Scott Atlas from the Hoover Institute of Stanford University has addressed this object in cases and pointed out that the population contracting COVID is at a very low risk of death, and the vulnerable have been protected. In light of this information, requiring healthy people to wear masks for the chance that they have COVID or the virus that causes it is unnecessary, and enforcing masks would be a puerile expend energy and attention of officials and business owners. Finally, the assumption that wearing a mask is a statement of your level of care for others is being used in an unintended way to pressure and bully individuals and businesses. Your statement says that wearing masks will be a way to show support to our local businesses and show that we care about each other. This sets up a scenario where anyone or any business who is not wearing a mask is assumed not to care. This is obviously a false claim. There are many people who may feel more cared for by an employer who does not force them to wear a mask or respects their choice. Please consider that your council statement has the potential to validate those who engage in bullying and shaming. Not only is there not enough evidence that the virus has spread asymptomatic and that masks prevent it, but the statement on masks will continue to put pressure on businesses and make those who do not comply a target. The public shaming and active attempts to boycott any establishment that do not promote masks has been a very disheartening movement to witness. I would ask that you support local businesses by acknowledging their efforts and success and trusting that they will take care of their establishments appropriately because they care about their employees, customers, communities, and the right to own and operate their own business. Thank you for taking comments about this topic. I again ask that you do not adopt the statement to take a position on masks in Eau Claire. We all want to be healthy and feel safe, but there are multiple reasons why wearing a mask needs to be a choice. Please make a statement that promotes respect, encourages the continued use of distance and general cleanliness, healthy eating and lifestyle, a mask if an individual wants to wear one, and encourages the vulnerable population to take extra precautions or stay home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your time.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Wilken, Liz Wilken.
Can you, can you see?
Uh, Liz, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Um, hello, everyone. My name is Liz Wilken. My address is 1521 Bolton Street in Eau Claire, and I am here tonight to urge all of you to stick to item 18 at tomorrow's meeting, the recommendation of mask wearing in public. The CDC recommends the general public wear cloth coverings in public and around people who don't live in one's household. I'm sorry, can you still hear me?
We can, yep, we can hear you.
I'm, um, like I was saying, the CDC recommends that the general public wear cloth face coverings in public and around people who don't live in one's household, and multiple peer-reviewed studies hold that their recommendation is a key to mitigating the spread of COVID-19. Uh, I would also like to mention that the University of Iowa recently published a study finding that states with mask requirements may have averted a total of 230,000 to 250,000 COVID cases by the end of May. I'm an 18-year-old college student, and I've known that 18 to 24-year-olds have been one of the single largest spreaders of COVID in the recent weeks. As a part of this age group, it is my experience and my belief that the majority of my peers will not stop attending gatherings, begin to wear masks, or to respect social distancing without a mandate from the city. To keep Eau Claire residents safe and healthy, this shows that we need to wear masks. Although tomorrow's resolution does not mandate masks, it is a step in the right direction. I believe that our federal government has cost human lives by its inaction, so it falls on you all to do the right thing on a local level. This is not a political issue, nor is this an issue of shaming and bullying. This is simply an issue of human life. I'm asking you to keep Eau Claire residents alive by simply supporting the wearing of masks in public, as it has been shown that we clearly cannot be trusted to do it on our own. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Busky, did, did you have another comment? Chris? No. Uh, Tru Vu? Tru Vu?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, hi. Can you hear us? My name is Tru Vu, and I live at 1640 Truman Drive, and I just wanted to talk about this CIP. Um, thank you for letting me have this time to voice my thoughts and be an advocate to the voices that are unheard. Um, and I'm just looking at the budget, and I see that there is a hole, and a hole in which that needs to be filled. The MONG community is the largest minority group in our community, and we don't have anyone to help the MONG non-English speakers members in our community. And I would hope, um, and speaking with some of my coworkers, my coworker at Black and Brown Women Power Coalition, we have seen so many times where we need, um, to find someone and to invest money into hiring more diverse people who work in the city or the county. Uh, we need someone who can help with language access, so that's where we, um, we don't have enough support. We need to have a bilingual community liaison, not just someone to work with, um, with the police department, but maybe to help out with all areas of the city and to help the community. I used to work at, um, an elementary school as a bilingual education assistant, and there have been multiple times when I have had MONG families who I've worked with recall me and not ask about questions, um, to help them about their child in school, but to help them to pay a water bill or to help them with, um, finding activities with YMCA or other activities because they don't know who to turn to, um, and to ask these questions. So my suggestion is, can we take part of a budget and turn it into a program or to a job position where we can have someone be a cultural liaison for the MONG community? That, I think, would really help support the MONG community in Eau Claire. And that's all that I have. Um, thank you for your time to listen to my request, and the Black and Brown Women Power Coalition would love to collaborate on this program if you guys decide to move on with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vu. Uh, Ms. Clausen? Amanda?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it was working. Um, Amanda Clausen, uh, 3995 50th Street is my address, and, uh, this is in regards to Agenda Note 18, and I'll just keep it brief. Um, movements are under, underway across the Boston as well as nationally to mandate mandatory mask wearing to combat the COVID-19 health crisis. I, like many others, oppose these mandates. It is not a matter of inconvenience, but a matter of choice. There is no one-size-fits-all when it comes to public health. Wearing a mask reduces airflow and oxygen levels, increases CO2 retention, possible inhaling toxins from masks, increasing cortisol levels, as well as driving slight and slight, slight and fright, um, responses, as well as various other detrimental physical and mental health factors. Under such circumstances, it is not sensible for elected leaders at any level to enforce a mask-wearing mandate. I view this issue as a fundamental case of personal freedom. I oppose any government efforts to force anyone to wear a mask. Mask wearing must remain a personal choice. As a member of the community, I insist you to not, to not support any mandatory mask mandates that may come before you at the city level for Eau Claire. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clausen. Uh, Ms. Wolfgram, did you have another comment?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, I, I, I apologize. I thought my hand was down.
Nope, all right, thank you.
Here we go.
All right, thank you. Mr. Busky, did you have anything? Seeing no other hands raised here. Ms. Richards?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, thank you.
Okay. I've emailed everyone mostly so you kind of know already how I feel, but I just wanted to make it public and, um, with my own voice that I strongly stand for personal freedom and liberty and issues of health decisions, and I think the city council's involvement in any orders or legislations or even recommendations or encouragements of masks will set a precedent that the city or the county can continue to get involved in personal health decisions. So I strongly oppose any type of recommendation or encouragement, um, including the line item 18 on the agenda for tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Uh, Jason Richards?
Hi, my name is Jason Richards, and, uh, I am Amber's husband. We live at 4111 Meadowwood Drive in Eau Claire. This is the first time I have ever been involved in, uh, in political politics, and I'm, I'm not very well-versed in these types of things, but I, it's at a point where I feel I need to voice my opinion. Um, I oppose any sort of, uh, public statement from the city council, um, either supporting or, um, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting some feedback here. I, I'm just saying that I oppose any sort of official statement on behalf of city council. Uh, I, my thoughts and, um, kind of line up My thoughts kind of line up with Kayla's message earlier, as well as Amanda's, that in doing so, it takes a position and from a city's perspective, it bullies others into believing that the non-mask wearers are the boogeyman. So thank you for your time, council.
Thank you, Ms. Richards.
I can't talk.
All right, I do not see any other hands. So, well, we have one more. Ms. Knott. Andrea Knott?
Hi.
Kat, I'm sorry. Kat.
Can you hear me? This is Andrea Kat.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yep, I live at 3906 Woburn Court in Eau Claire. I am also responding in response to Agenda 18 that is on the item tomorrow. I also oppose the idea of face masks. Sorry, this is also the first time that we're doing anything like this just because I strongly agree with the fact that we need to be free to make our own decisions. I have a daughter who has asthma, and also some sons that have asthma, and going to the grocery store and shopping is stressful because we get looks and dirty comments. And I feel that my children are being discriminated against because we're not wearing masks. But we have legitimate reasons why we're not wearing masks. We're not being selfish. We're doing what's best for my family. So making everybody wear a mask is just not a good solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kat. All right, I will close out the public commentary period. And thank you, everyone, for joining us here this evening, virtually and remotely. And look forward to seeing or hearing or having some discussions with all of you here tomorrow afternoon, starting at 4:00. If there is no objection from council, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody. The Eau Claire City Council meeting is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson. Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Kristofferson.
Here.
Emanuel.
Here.
Gregert.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone that is joining us here in chambers, and then also those of you joining us remotely for the Tuesday, July 14 legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. I can thank you to the residents also that are listening in and those of you that participated in last night's meeting as well. During our legislative session this afternoon, the council members will be participating, again, either remotely or in person, to deliberate and take action on the agenda items before us today. City staff and council members have spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting, and I have sincere appreciation for the continued work and dedication to this community. I also want to thank Valley Media Works and their staff for live streaming this meeting. To watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. The first item of business is the COVID-19 update from City Manager Peters. Good afternoon, Mr. Peters.
Good afternoon, Council President Weld and members of the city council. Just a quick update on a few things. First, just a reminder again of where we get information. It's very important that we make our decisions and form our opinions based upon accurate information. And the best place to get that is at the COVID-19 Information Hub, which is an Eau Claire-based document or website with a lot of tremendous information. Certainly has metrics and statistics. And then there's also a call center. If you have specific questions, which can be reached at 831-7425. There's also Facebook presence as well for things. And then there's live updates on Mondays and Wednesdays at 3:15, and those can be watched live with a YouTube link or on Facebook if anybody is interested. In terms of where we're at today, we're now at 346 positive COVID-19 cases in the city of Eau Claire or in Eau Claire County with one death. There's been an increase in outbreaks. And if you look at the dashboards, which are updated once a week on the COVID Hub website, four out of our five measures for disease occurrence are now in the red zone. So that means that, you know, we are not... We're exceeding... Well, it speaks for itself that four out of the five measures or measurements that we use for how the disease is spreading are now in that red indicator. The healthcare sector is still in the green, but, you know, time will certainly tell us that, and experience tells us, that the infection rate then translates into the need for the healthcare sector to take care of the folks that are being infected. So although the healthcare sector is gill currently, has green indicators, it is not good that we are in, you know, troubling that our disease occurrence is, again, four out of the five sectors are now red. And then when we look at our public health response capacities, one of those metrics is yellow, and the other metric is also red. So we're starting to see some stresses on the systems, and we're starting to see some indicators of the community spread that is going to be continuing to increase the stressors on our systems to be able to handle it. In terms of the activity for the executive and our emergency authority that you have passed and renewed several times, really the only two things that have happened in that capacity over the last two weeks were some last-minute moves for polling sites. We do have some polling sites because of COVID have decided they don't want to participate going forward, and so we've had to move rather quickly. And the voting site that used to be at our Redeemer has now moved to the VHW on Star Avenue, and the Pentecostal Church has been moved to the American Legion on Water Street. Just a little bit on the Economic Recovery Task Force is hard at work, working with the business community to link the business community and the best health practices for them to be successful as we go through this pandemic. And, you know, the last week or so has been a lot of effort and work on support for cloth mask coverings in the workplaces so that, again, so that we can protect employees as well as customers in the workplace. So the task force has been doing a lot of work along those areas. In terms of facility status, really no change in the last two weeks. Virtually all of our facilities are open and available as long as you follow the health guidance, as well as our ball fields and our park shelters. In terms of the public spaces or the public buildings, City Hall and the other buildings are available for appointment. We prefer the appointments to be between 9:00 and 11:00, and 2:00 and 4:00. And when people come into the building and move about the building, they're expected to have a mask on once they are in a space that is very limited and meets the other requirements, then they can have the meeting. So strong emphasis on online services and encouraging the online services to be a way that we can service our public. Employees, again, are returning, but they're returning in small groups. And we're working with those small groups so that they're non-overlapping, so that if we do have COVID-19 within an employee group, we can limit that to smaller groups of people. And so that's that. Otherwise, the impact, you know, we're supporting the public health order. We're making operational adjustments and continue to evaluate, particularly as it relates to how we operate City Hall. As those of you that are in the room, you can see that we are remodeling to the dais so that at some point, if we choose to meet with more face-to-face, we'll have some space to do that. And then in terms of the financial impacts, we're getting a better assessment of really what we hope will be the one-time adjustments that will be needed for, and not long-term, but the one-time financial adjustments. And probably look to the next council meeting or the meeting after that, we'll be bringing forward some one-time financial adjustments that we feel are needed to impact or to, you know, to go forward with 2020 and the COVID-19 response. But we're anticipating that we'll be able to take care of the, you know, the financial impacts with the resources that we have. And we're not anticipating any layoffs or wage freezes or that type of impact. And we're hopeful that, you know, it's a one-time adjustment, and we're able to deal with that with either current funds or grant funds or other funds that will become available. In terms of our next steps, the resolution today encouraging the wearing of masks, we continue to remain flexible to the changing conditions, preparing for the surge of, which we hope doesn't happen, but if it is, preparation for that increase in people that need health care, making operational adjustments. We continue to support the economic recovery. And then, of course, being very supportive and working with the Respond Together Plan. With that, I don't really have anything else for the update today, but I'd take any questions you might have.
Any questions for City Manager Peters? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you very much, Council President Weld, and thank you to City Manager for this update. One question that I have is, I know I've seen news reports that there are more people who are going to Sojourner House or other shelters at this time. And I'm wondering if the city or the county has a means to track evictions and if evictions have been increasing.
Good question. And really, the only area that we would have statistics for evictions would be in our housing authority or housing that we control. And there really has not been an increase there. So evictions are a private matter between the landlord and the tenant and are handled through the court system. So we really don't have any data that would be, you know, that we could report on to know whether evictions are up or down from a data perspective. Anecdotally, certainly with some of the landlords or people that I've talked with or have heard, that there hasn't been, you know, a significant increase in evictions. I mean, I'm sure there's some, but we're not aware of a significant increase in evictions, at least anecdotally. And we don't have data one way or the other on it.
Thank you so much for the update.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions in regards to... Councilmember Kristofferson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Mr. Peters, have we made decisions about Hobs and where those individuals might be going?
So we are still working through the next phase or step for the Sojourner. You know, currently, the current facility in Barstow does not have enough space to safely hold the number of individuals that are in need right now. And they're currently at Hobs. We are working through some alternate options and alternatives for that. In fact, I have an important phone call related to that tomorrow morning. But today, I would not have an announcement for either the, with great certainty, the, you know, the time or the place, but know that there are people working on that issue very actively.
Do you have a follow-up?
Certainly.
Would you be letting us know when that's decided? Thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilmember Jean.
Thank you, Council President Weld, and then thank you, Mr. Peters. I just have a quick follow-up question to Councilmember Anderson's request. I was wondering, you know, understanding that the city does not have any data on some of these, on the increase of the reason for the increase of the folks that are going to Sojourner House, is there a way that the city could partner up with the Sojourner House to, I'm sure they do some sort of intake for us to collect some of those data for the purposes of being able to, you know, create solutions down the road?
Yeah, certainly, we could talk to them about what data they may or may not have in terms of, you know, causation. Again, I'm not sure what data they collect, you know, from the population. But we could certainly ask them about that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council in regards to COVID-19? I don't see any, Mr. Peters. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do councilmembers have questions regarding the consent agenda or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you so much, Council President. I just wanted to flag a few of the liquor licenses that are being transferred or renewed and just ask if any of these had been brought to the attention of the License Review Committee for potential complaints regarding COVID-19 and our efforts to, you know, have 50% occupancy spacing of patrons, et cetera. If there had been any complaints for any of the licenses that we're about to vote on.
Thank you. Ms. Stromberger is here in chambers, and she'll share her response.
Certainly. None of the establishments on the consent agenda have been raised to staff as an area of concern. It doesn't mean that, you know, that there's necessarily full compliance, but we haven't received complaints about it either.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or items that they wish to remove for separate consideration? Seeing none, and a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, the consent agenda is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed unanimously. The next item is a proclamation. We have one this afternoon, and I have two members from the community that are here to receive this proclamation. And I have Mr. Andres and Ms. Snyder participating remotely. And so I'll come up and share the proclamation and then welcome them to their comments when it's completed. it's completed.
So, this proclamation is in recognition of Americans with Disabilities Act of Awareness Day, and agrees as follows. Whereas thirty years ago this month, President George H. W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities and to establish a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And the ADA has expanded opportunities for individuals with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing full participation in the community life and the city of Eau Claire, and the city of Eau Claire affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as embodied in the ADA. And whereas, on the thirtieth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, we celebrate and recognize the progress that has been made and renew our commitment to empowering individuals with disabilities through equal access so they can achieve their full potential, and we celebrate the contributions to this community and great nation. Now, therefore, I, Terry Weld, President of the Eau Claire City Council, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2020, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in the city of Eau Claire, and invite everyone to join us as we recommit to working together to remove unnecessary barriers and continue to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom envisioned by the passage of the ADA.
Mr. Andres and Ms. Snyder, thank you very much. Mr. Andres, did you wish to share a few words?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mr. Peters and the City Council, to thank them for making this day possible. I worked with you guys on numerous projects for accessibility in the city, and I look forward to working with you on other projects within the city for accessibility.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for the proclamation, and thanks especially to the council and the city staff for working on a daily basis for accessibility. I wrote a poem for the ADA because it means that much, and I'd like to read it to you.
That's great.
You can talk about me instead of to me. You can question my right to be. You can pity and disrespect me and ignore my needs I didn't see, and still I'll rise. I'm your grandmother who doesn't hear. I'm your friend living with anxiety and fear. I'm your grandpa who's lost his mind, or his wife who is going blind, and still will rise. We're one out of five, not dead yet, still alive. Our needs aren't special, they just are. A parking space that's not too far, a friend who listens, even if it takes longer, and fights for access with us. Together, we're stronger, and still will rise. We won't stop until all can play, work, and love, and pray in whatever way. So, celebrate with us. Because of the ADA and caring people, we can say that together we'll all rise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Thank you for the wonderful poem, and thank you for all the work that you and Mr. Andres do for our community. It's greatly appreciated. Thanks again. We're ready to move into our business agenda, which starts with Agenda Item Number 12, which is a resolution granting keeping a poultry license pursuant to Chapter 6.15 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire. Again, good afternoon, Ms. Stromberger. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you. So, this is a license for 1717 Necessity Street. This was an application received after the Health Department followed up on a complaint of an unlicensed coop on the property. The city received two objections from abutting properties, and those letters are included in your packet. There was also one additional objection that was received from a non-abutting property that was not included in your packet. Only abutting properties are eligible to object, and there are four abutting properties. The complaints list concerns of odor, waste, and rodents, and the Health Department inspector went on site last week and verified the keeping of manure on the property line, as well as they've, she found improper food storage on the property. So, myself and Jen Hansen from the Health Department are available for questions, and the applicant and objector received notification as well, so I'm not sure if they're online or not.
Does council have any questions for Ms. Stromberger or for Ms. Hansen? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Ms. Stromberger. I'm not sure if I missed this in our packet, but was there some sort of narrative describing how the applicant would handle storage of feed or waste or construct this coop? I see that there's like a design for a coop, but I don't know that it matches the pictures that we've seen.
Yep.
So, I guess like, I was wondering if there was more narrative information, or maybe since the, it appears that the applicant's maybe on the, on the WebEx right now, you might be able to hear from them, but I just thought I'd ask at this juncture.
There was nothing, no narrative or letter supplied. I guess you're probably looking for something like what you received the last time there was an application. We did not receive a letter like that this time.
Okay. So, I guess a follow-up would be, do you, I guess, do you have information that would lead you to believe that, that they would, you know, have a plan for, for the storage of waste and feed, for example?
I have not had any communication with the applicant, so I would defer to the Health Department or the applicant themselves as to what their plan might be.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hansen?
Yeah, in their application, they did say that they were going to put it in garbage bags and put out for the garbage receptacle man to pick up. But that is not what I observed what was happening when I did go out there. It was piled along the fence of the neighbors.
Councilmember Gregor, did you have any other questions?
Thank you, President Weld. I don't, I guess I just don't see where that information is in the facility anymore. But yeah, thank you for that answer.
Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I was wondering if council were to vote to deny the license, would they have a chance? What happens then? Do they have a chance to reapply, or what would be the next steps? Are they barred from having chickens for the rest of their lives?
Typically, council can reconsider an item after a year. That's the timeline that we'd be looking at for a reapplication, but they would need to remove, they currently have chickens unlicensed on the property. They would need to remove the chickens during that time period.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, President Weld. I just want to verify my hearing of what you reported. When this application for licensing comes to us, does that mean that it's been remediated so that now that they have a license application, that the refuse and the feed are in secure containers, or just a promise that that will happen?
At this point, it's just a plan that that would happen.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Worthman?
Council President, I'm just having trouble hearing because someone else's microphone is on.
Did you have a question, Councilmember Worthman, or?
I was having trouble hearing because someone, some one of the attendees' microphone is on.
Sure. As far as I can tell...
User two and Amber Richard.
Yeah, she's just listening, and I can't, she has no access. I have no access to her, so. How about now?
It's better.
Did you have a question, or was it just the inability to?
No, just, just I couldn't, just that I couldn't hear.
All right, thank you. Is there any other questions for either Ms. Hansen from the Health Department or Ms. Stromberger? I believe the applicant is online if you had questions. I don't, I don't see any questions. Thank you. On a motion then, by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Jeong, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that the applicant has demonstrated a rather blatant disregard for licensing procedures and their relationship with their neighbors, and I think that this license should be denied.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I just want to share with my colleagues that I had an opportunity to go out and visit with this property owner and had two conversations with each of the neighbors who have lodged complaints. And at the time that I was at the residence, of course, it's not hot today, so there was no odor. The feed and the refuse was in airtight locked containers, and I asked if they were willing to remediate the concerns of the neighbors. One would have been the fence issue and the fact that it's actually stored on an easement so that they would have to move the coop and everything further away from the neighbor's fence. I also asked about remediating the mice and those kinds of things, just to show that they had some interest in showing good faith with their neighbors. But in conversation with the neighbors complaining, they were not willing to negotiate in any way. So, I think my, just that whole sense of broken relationships between neighbors and the fact that this was more than a year of keeping the chickens without a license, I am unfortunately unable to support this license application. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Is there any other discussion from council? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, President Weld. I guess this is more of a question, but if these complaints had have been occurring for a year, had they been directed to city staff, and like, how did staff respond to those complaints, given that you've had a, you've had an ordinance, you know, for more than a year now, and there was like a pathway, I guess, to rectify the situation? I guess I'd try, interested in hearing a bit more about that timeline and how the city got to this point.
Ms. Hansen, did you want to speak to that? Were you able to hear the question? Ms. Hansen?
Jennifer, are you there? Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm not sure why my mic keeps muting. We did receive a complaint about a month ago from the Health Department. They called into the Health Department, and the wrong property address was given to the front desk of the Health Department. So, I did go out to Necessity Street, and I drove around, and I walked the street, and I could not find the address. So, then, there was no call back number provided. Then, this same complaint called two weeks later and provided me with the 1717 address, and I was able to find it, and then we proceeded from there. That was the first complaint that we received.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hansen.
Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Gregor, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm ready to vote on this. I guess I can't really support it either, you know, based on the lack of information, although I don't know if it would be permissible for the applicant to speak during our Tuesday session here. I certainly would, you know, I feel like I could shed some light on this, you know, but right now, I don't have, I can't, I can't support the application without, you know, more information about what is being proposed here.
I guess I don't know if it's protocol or not, if there's a specific question that, is it up to the chair, or, okay. You know, I guess if there was a, you know, I, from what I understand, there's been some discussion and an opportunity to share questions from the count, or from the Board of Health. But, you know, I think based on the fact that there still has not been any effort made to, well, I guess, Councilmember Gregor, if you have a specific question, I guess I would open to the applicant to answer a question but not make a statement.
Sure, thank you, President Weld. I guess I would, my question for the applicant would be what, you know, what they have done to, to, you know, operate a, you know, a responsible chicken-keeping operation on their property and how that has changed since being contacted by the city and being made aware of the ordinance and being aware of the requirement to have a license, and what has, what those conversations, what conversations have occurred with neighbors in order to reach a, an application that they feel is worthy of approval?
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Mr. Lanier?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. If you can talk closer to the microphone or louder, that would be appreciated.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you. And if...
Okay. Yes, we are willing to try to reach an agreement with our neighbors. We have will kill. We are with our businesses, and we are willing to operate and have will kill come out to remove any pets that are... Will be on the property, or could be on the property, as well as we keep all refuse and waste in 50-gallon sealed drums. The refuse that was along the fence was not actually refuse from said chicken coop. It was long waste from pine needles and maple leaves that came from last fall. As well as, we are willing to build a fence if that were to be built a fence around the coop.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Are there any other questions from council? Any other discussion? Seeing none? I'm sorry, Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Thank you. It would seem to me that ample opportunity was provided, and there's no reason to think that, based on the statement as I understood it, that we should be in any way motivated to extend this license. I don't think that they've earned the right.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
No.
Bergy?
No.
Christopherson?
No.
Emmanuel?
No.
Gregert?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Lor?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
No.
Jeong?
No.
Anderson?
No.
And that resolution is defeated. Agenda item number 13 is a resolution approving the concept plan for Boyd Park developed by the City of Eau Claire and East Hill Neighborhood Association in conjunction with Ayers Associates. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Plaza, from last night's presentation, or from staff? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. Just wanted to, you know, maybe follow up with some questions, you know, after receiving an email from Doug Reese this afternoon, who wanted to speak last night but wasn't unable to use the WebEx function to raise his hand and speak, unfortunately. We were able to speak on the phone in a bit more detail yesterday as well. I guess some of his... Like, he's very supportive of the Boyd Park Plus. He had some ideas of regard to the placement of the neighborhood pavilion, and so I guess my questions that are related to that are, you know, is that third building that's being proposed? I guess, what is the purpose of it exactly? And would it be possible to, you know, change the location of it? Maybe switching it out with the, you know, moving it a little bit closer to the river's edge and, you know, having it switch with the... Trying to remember the name of the... I think it's like the Adventure Playground? So that the sightlines from the two existing buildings can still look out onto the park? I guess that some of it was... Some of his concern was on the sightlines, and maybe those two buildings closer to the bridge being kind of marginalized from the rest of the park if that building is placed, like, kind of in the sightline. So I guess my first question would be about that third building, what the reason for it is, considering there's already another pavilion type of building? And I guess, what kind of flexibility there is to move things around as the fundraising occurs and as this park develops?
Mr. Sawinski?
Chris, our consultant, is also on the line, I believe. That third building is a neighborhood pavilion. When they imagined that, that's where they found the location. I wasn't there in the planning when they did that. I talked to Chad Rowcamp today, asking him about, you know, how this all was all developed, and if Mr. Reese was involved in the process, and he was. And Chad said, you know, this is what the neighborhood association brought forward. Not everybody's going to agree with everything, but that was the association's options to bring it forward, and Doug and Mr. Reese certainly can have his opinion. I assume they put that there because it's probably closer to utilities, and it's just a cost factor. The further you move away from utilities, the increased cost it would be to construct that. Chris, if you can enhance on that, that's my understanding of the building.
Yeah, I can enhance on that a little bit as to why it got placed where it is. It should be noted, too, that what we're proposing is... I know it says a pavilion in that location, but really what we've proposed is more of a shade-type structure, something that's a tree-type structure that pulls on the idea of connecting to nature. So the location and the placement of it is there so that it's... And the design is so that it's a little bit more transparent or opaque. It's not as dense as a building, so you can still see through it. It's placed right next to the activity lawn, so that there's flexibility in doing concerts, doing... I should say, I say concerts, but small, little gatherings, doing movie nights, doing community gatherings right at that pavilion that's right next to the lawn, so you can have those two spaces break out from each other. And then the Adventure Playground is placed a little bit closer to the trees, so that it pulls on some of the ideas of, like, a playground coming out of the forest. So the design of the playground is going to be a little bit more rustic, and it's going to tie into some of the riparian forest corridor design ideas. And then the other pavilion that's there existing, we've kind of reframed what that's meant to be, and that's supposed to be now more of a pavilion that goes towards the natural side of the park, more of the prairie side, more of the riparian side. So there's sort of two different uses there that we're trying to appeal to, so that you can have two different groups who have two different events going on at the same time versus one whole event kind of messing up that whole plaza space.
Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah. So I guess the point about, you know, it being somewhat see-through thing and not like a solid building, like the warming house is a good piece of information. Well, thank you. And so I guess I kind of envisioned, you know, it being used as a shelter for, like, if a band were to play and people to be sitting out on the lawn, is that... Or like, maybe there's a movie screen set up at the edge of it, or something? Is that...
That's correct. Yep. Correct. And then it also has the flexibility to be positioned so that that sled hill is a little bit more engaging with that pavilion shade structure piece.
I guess I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
I saw that in the resolution, there's a... Or in the cover sheet, there's reference to solar shade trees. Could you describe that a bit?
Yeah, that's the shade piece that's going to replace the pavilion. We've been talking to a variety of manufacturers, and I'm hoping we'd be able to supply that product for this project. But essentially, Solar forma in town is producing solar shade trees, and we would like to help support that local business by bringing that product into this location. We think it's a good fit from a design standpoint. We think it's a good fit from a goal standpoint of the project, trying to be more environmentally friendly. But also, I think it works well in that location where these solar shade trees are a little bit lighter on the landscape than a building or a pavilion would be.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from staff, from last night's presentation? Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. One of the things that was raised, and wanted to just connect about it, is the pathways through the prairie and the way that it's drawn is sort of like a new cut through. And I just want to double-check that that was something that the group working on the prairie had input on and was happy with, with this design?
Thank you, Andrew. I can respond to that. This is Chris Sawinski again. We've heard some mixed responses from the prairie group as to what's desired there. I think what the plan you're seeing right now is likely has one or two paths that are too many, that need to be cut out. We understand that prairie landscapes are oftentimes large swaths of land, and in order to convey that landscape, we need to give it that scale. So I think what you see from this plan is we'll likely cut out two of those trails that cross through the middle of the path, but we'd still like to provide those paths as handicap accessible with limestone screens, so that they can be enjoyed by all. Thank you.
Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. My question is related to the prairie as well. There, you know, particularly with regard to the, you know, the large, you know, the idea of it as like a contiguous, large space, or as large as possible, given the confines of the park here. The prairie platforms that were mentioned, there was a concern from Doug Reese, who emailed us about the, you know, just how those may break up the view, I guess, of the... Particularly the one in the middle presumably is the main concern, the one that's in the middle of the prairie. What exactly do those look like from the perspective of the designers?
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy. Chris, again, I'll add to that. The one... The idea here is that we give people opportunity to view the prairie and the natural space from a different perspective, whether it's elevated or it's down below. Likely, I could see that one in the middle going away for a couple of different reasons, because I tend to agree with Doug on that sense, that you don't want to break up that large landscape with too much. But I... We feel rather strong that the one on the far left side should remain to help give opportunities for people to view the prairie from that elevated perspective, but also give people the opportunity to accessibly see the prairie. There's no accessible, handicap-accessible location where someone could go down there right now and view the prairie in a convenient location. So providing that elevated boardwalk that's extremely handicap-accessible with materials is, I think, a great addition to the park as well. Plus, you'll also notice that on the north side, we're providing a boardwalk that is cantilevered over the river's edge. We're trying to... Hang on one second, I have kids walking in. Sorry. We're trying to give people an opportunity to engage with the river at the same time. It goes back to what some of the goals were for the Boyd Park Group, which is connecting people with nature. So it's not just the prairie, it's also the river in this case.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Councilmember Worthman, did you have another question? Any other questions from council for staff? I don't see any. On a motion then, by Councilmember Lor, and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to express my appreciation for many of the folks who have been very, very involved in this process on the east hill. They have put in a tremendous amount of work, you know, working, obviously, with city staff and with, you know, all of the different partners helping design this as well. I just... I think it's incredible to see... You know, we talked about how do we make sure that our community is stepping up and supporting, you know, our local government in different ways, especially in times of need, and I feel like this is one of those times. You know, people are thinking differently about how to connect a neighborhood and a community to make it a stronger, you know, and better place. And so, you know, I'm really thankful that this is coming forward to us. I will be supporting it. Just a couple other side notes is, you know, I've had a chance to attend a number of these meetings. There's a lot of people who have been involved in this planning process, and so I think the point made earlier that not everyone is going to have all of the things they wanted included is right. But I think if you look overall at what's being presented here, that people can really look at this and say, you know, this is an exciting project that frankly is going to be a jewel of our community, showing what, you know, what can be done in terms of, you know, neighborhood and community spaces. I really think that. I know that the skateboarders have been involved in this as well and are excited. I was contacted last night from Gabe Brummett, who also talked about how, you know, they're pleased with how the skateboarding is still, you know, being envisioned as a part of this, and, you know, want to see that happen in the near future. So it just seems to me that there's a lot of really strong and supportive goodwill around this project, and I want to thank all the partners and staff who have also helped move this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any other discussion? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. I'd like to amplify a little bit what my colleague, Councilmember Worthman, was saying, that from the perspective of neighborhood associations, the Eastside Hill Neighborhood Association is really iconic, and so many of the newer neighborhood associations look to what they have done in order to form their own plans and guidelines. And I think here again, the Eastside has done something that's just a beautiful citizen engagement that not taxes the city's resources, but leads the city into something that the community really wants and will benefit our entire community. So I want to congratulate them on a wonderful project, but also a really outstanding vision, and something that the rest of our city neighborhood associations can look at for planning their own vision and encouraging their own leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Do also want to thank the organizers and city staff and Mr. Sawinski for the design work here. The... Yeah, I mean, I think this is really a great... One thing that I think that I want to bring up here is that, you know, this really is kind of a big crossroads of the whole city. It's sort of like, you know, particularly for people who are walking and biking, because there's the bike trail on the north side of the river at Galloway Street. It connects to the whole north side of the city. So it's kind of this hub that I think, you know, this design, you know, I think as it evolves, we're going to need to be very cognizant of that fact. And, you know, there is a piece about, you know, making sure there's some traffic calming in here for people that are maybe flying through on their bicycle commute, but at the same time, we need to make sure, you know, we're providing a good transportation connection for folks. So just making sure we have that north-south connection with the bridge and the east-west for when people are biking down East Grand and going to Fairway Street as well. The point about bike parking, too, I think is really important here, because, you know, as mentioned yesterday, there's a very limited amount of automobile parking for this park that is off-street, and we need to make sure that people feel comfortable and secure, you know, riding their bike to this location, and parking has various amenities. So I'm excited that that's, you know, a consideration with this. and secure, you know, riding their bike to this location and parking at various amenities. So I'm excited that that's, you know, a consideration with this plan as well. It's pretty amazing what everything is able to be packed in here. So, yeah, including the skate park, I'm really glad to see that that has a prominent place in this park. And, yeah, it was really exciting to attend the open houses for this and see the community engagement, and it's going to need to continue, of course, and really wish the neighborhood well in this endeavor. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Let's go. I can't wait to see it finished.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lawre.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 14 is a resolution indicating receipt and review of the 2019 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for the wastewater treatment plant and collection system. Mr. Berg, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Council President Weld and members of the City Council. The Compliance Maintenance Annual Report evaluates the wastewater treatment plant and collection system as required by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Grades of A through F are assigned to different areas of the plant and collection system operations. The overall grade for the Oaklair wastewater system was 4.0 over the 4.0 scale. The Department of Natural Resources does not require action on any maintenance activities unless the grade point is average is less than 3.0, and we were perfect this year. So we have nothing to, nothing to change or revise. The DNR requires the City Council to adopt a resolution indicating receipt and review of the report. I just have a couple things that I'd like to mention here. The perfect 4.0 score results from a combination of excellent maintenance practices and efficient wastewater plant and a group of dedicated employees. The renovation plant is resilient and can withstand the many changing variables such as flow levels, seasonal changes, and influent content. Many parameters are monitored daily and changes are made to the treatment process to maximize treatment quality. Our employees are becoming well-versed in the guidance of our wastewater treatment plant and adapt well to all of the variables of the encounter. Just a little interesting fact here, the DNR charges the City of Oaklair an environmental impact fee for the effluent that we discharged to the Triple River. The fee is incentivized in basis to charge on the quality of the effluent that we produce. In 2015, the fee for the City of Oaklair was nearly $85,000. I just paid the fee for 2019, and it was down to $18,500. So very nice savings for the city, and it shows that what we're putting back in the river is very high quality. One item that's been an issue in the past has been our sludge storage, and currently we're constructing a 1 million gallon sludge storage tank at our wastewater plant, and that will bring us into full compliance with the DNR and the requirement of having 180 days of sludge storage capacity on-site. And it will also serve us well into the future for anticipated growth of the city. That's all I have. I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Does council have any questions? Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Thank you. Mr. Berg, a while back, about the time that the city was embarking on the major reinvestment in our sewage system, there was a problem with runoff infiltration or whatever in the City of Altoona. Has that been corrected, or is that still an issue?
Yes, that has been corrected. They've been working diligently as we have with them, and those items are now corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Any other questions from council for Mr. Berg? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Berg, for that great report and to all the staff there. Thank you. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to ask Mr. Lane Berg and the work that his leadership has produced, and I know there's a lot of people that are involved in making sure, but it does seem to me, as someone who's been on City Council for quite a while, that we just continuously seem to upgrade and get better at how we are managing the waste in our community and thinking about how to lessen our environmental impact. So just want to say thank you for his work and all the folks that support that incredible work.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you again, Council President Weld. I also, I particularly enjoy, there's not anything really romantic about wastewater treatment, but this really makes me want to just applaud our city's continuing efforts, but I particularly enjoy hearing the credit given to the training of staff and their, their working as a team and adapting and continuing to improve the process. I think that shows excellent management motivation, and we're certainly observing the results. So thank you very much for excellent work.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lawre.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 15 is a resolution approving appointments and reappointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. We resolved that the City Council of the City of Oaklair does hereby approve the following appointments and reappointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. To the Administrative Review Board, Donna Osted for reappointment and new appointments to Ben Frankel, Karen Roselowski, and Joe Sorrow. To the Board of Heating Examiners, reappointment for Mr. Fred Gardner and Daniel Larson. To the Library Board, a reappointment to Ms. Nancy Lynch. To the Redevelopment Authority, a new appointment to Jennifer Fezemeyer. To the Revolving Loan Fund Committee, a reappointment to Maria DeCosta and Bill Ogden. To the Sustainability Advisory Committee, a new appointment to Gary Paseka. And to the Transit Commission, a reappointment to Joshua Clements, a reappointment to Bob Schrafnagel, and a new appointment to Kelly Austin. Does council have any questions in regards to the list of appointments and reappointments to boards, commissions, and committees? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lawre.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Again, thank you to all those that have volunteered and re-volunteered to be either reappointed or appointed. Your dedication to our community and your service is, it is truly and sincerely appreciated. Agenda item number 15 is a resolution approving appointments, I'm sorry, is a resolution approving the Advisory Committee on Appointments for the 2020 Work Plan. Advisory Committee Chair, Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, at our last meeting for the Advisory Committee on Appointments, we voted, or the committee passed our work plan for 2020, and we can divide that work plan into three buckets: recruiting, training, and appreciating. We're going to be working on recruiting diverse and competent people for our boards and commissions, also, which will be at the duty of, you know, all of us, the city and council members, hopefully. We can all take that on, asking people to join the boards and commissions. Also, training for chairs and vice chairs, which will be done by staff, and then also our host, the annual volunteer appreciation event, so our appreciating of all of our volunteers that take their time to help our city. Also, so that's kind of the work plan, I want to just briefly talk about last year's work plan, which we approved at our first meeting this year. And that, last year, the Board Advisory Committee on Appointments voted on, or worked on establishing a model agenda or a standard agenda for all city commissions and boards, which includes a public comment period for all city commissions and boards. So city staff and the city manager did a great job coming up formatting just a standard agenda that should be showing up in our meetings. If you haven't seen it yet, hopefully you'll see it soon. So that's an update on our work plan and what will be happening. Also, maybe I'll just say, we weren't able to fulfill some boards and commissions because there was a lack of applicants going back to our work plan, and I just want to call those out specifically, but the Board of Heating Examiners, Board of Review, the Housing Advisory Board, and the Utility Appeals Board all need new applicants. So we can all get to work right now in recruiting people to apply and so we can fully staff these boards and commissions with volunteers. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Are there any questions? Councilmember Jean.
Thank you, Council President. I do not have a question. I just want to say thank you so much to all the work that everyone's doing, especially with Council Bergy. And then I also would like to request that people, I think we have participants who is not muted, so I'm hearing their typing and hearing the background, so I just wanted to do a kind reminder that I can't hear with the additional background.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Jean. Any other questions for Councilmember Bergy? Councilmember Worthman.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. This is a follow-up to Councilmember Jean. Just if, if the background noise is really making it hard to hear, so if you see attendees as chairs, you could remind attendees to mute their microphones. That would be really helpful, and it just makes it hard to hear what's going on.
Sure. Thank you. Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Bergy, and to all of the members who serve on the Appointments Committee. It's a lot of work to serve on that committee, and so I really appreciate that. I want to share that I'm definitely in support of the work plan that's being implemented and served on appointments from that Saturday, and I think that's a good tradition and a good habit that we're following. Just want to plant a seed that there's been a concept that I think is really important to our continued work in trying to create a more just organization, and that includes, in addition to recruiting people of diverse backgrounds, is also to make sure that whomever is on the boards and committees are helping to pull forward on creating a more just community. So I'd love to just keep the conversation open, certainly won't be making any amendments today, but keep the conversation open for if and when we're able to hire somebody to help us lead in our organization, maybe a diversity and inclusion coordinator, to really help us take a critical look at our work on appointments and what are the best practices that we can be doing, not only to recruit folks, however, to also equip and empower people who are already serving and are willing to be serving. So just want to plant that seed, that I think that could be an important element at a later time to put into the work plan, once we can get some more structure and teeth around how we can help that effort be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. I couldn't quite hear the update about the, the standard agenda that city staff and the Appointments Committee is working on. Like has been said, there was some background music, and it's difficult to hear some of the council members who are not joining on the phone, and so I'm wondering if we can repeat that, that update.
Certainly. Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you. I moved the mic closer, so maybe that will help as well. The update, which I was, I was on a part of the committee last year, so Councilmember Beaton might actually know more about this, but what we talked about at our first meeting at the Advisory Committee Appointments and we approved was that there was a standard agenda for all city commissions and boards, which includes a public comment period. So the city manager presented a standard agenda that everyone will be working off of all the committees and boards for the city, and, yeah, it just brings everyone on the same page, and it looked really nice, and, yeah, I guess that's the update. Does city manager like to add anything else, or anyone else from the Appointments Committee?
Councilmember Beaton, did you have?
Yeah, I just have a follow-up question.
Certainly.
So are those standard agendas being used now, or is there a timeline for when that transition is going to happen?
City Manager Peters.
So, thank you very much, Council President Weld. So we have distributed the sample, our standard format, to the staff people that work with the various boards and commissions, and so as, you know, as meetings start going forward, you'll start seeing that format working its way into various meetings.
That's great. Thanks for all of the work on this, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Council Vice President, did you have another question?
I forgot to put my hand down. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Gregor, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. I guess, yeah, it's great to hear the progress on, you know, creating some continuity between agendas, creating a higher standard, consistent agenda. I guess, you know, I serve on the Plan Commission, and I guess my question would be what I can do as a commissioner on a commission that does not have a public comment period? What can I do to move that forward? And as it relates to this work plan, what is the ongoing work of the Advisory Committee on Appointments look like to make sure that, that they, that this standard agenda is implemented? Or is that really a city manager role? Thanks.
Council Manager, City Manager Peters.
Good, good question, Councilmember Gregor. So, you know, we're working with the staff people. There's training that has to be done with this because, you know, there's, there's parameters and boundaries and how to, you know, how to have that be effective, and so we're working with staff who is then going to be working with the chairs to make sure that, you know, that people are trained in how to implement the new, you know, the new format. So that's why I was saying, we're working, you know, with the staff, and they'll be working with the chairs, and so, you know... with the chairs, and so, you know, as we go forward, you'll see, you know, you'll start to see that agenda format show up at different boards and commissions, including the Plan Commission.
Okay. So, there, I guess my follow-up would be, is there a, there's no reason to like put that on the, in the work plan, that the, basically the Advisory Committee on Appointments is no longer, you know, working on this because it's considered checked off?
That's correct. It's considered done, and really now it rolls into that training, that training component and work of the commission.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Or committee, committee, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Any other questions? Seeing none on the motion then, by Councilmember Anderson, and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jeong.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution supporting safe voting practices for the August-November elections of 2020. This agenda item, this resolution, has been brought forward by Councilmember Beaton and Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Beaton, do you have a presentation?
Yeah, I don't have any, anything to show, but I do have some things I'd like to say.
Sure.
So, obviously, COVID-19 was a significant challenge in our April elections. I think that statewide, we saw that voters were really choosing, faced to choose between their health and their right to vote. And as a voter advocate, both in my, in my role as a city council, and city council member, and professionally and personally, I, you know, the day after the elections, I started to look at how we could ensure that we can, we can protect our election process for August and November, to make sure that voters don't ever have to make that choice again. I found that, after sort of assessing what happened in April, both statewide and locally, I found that the city of Eau Claire actually did a really remarkable job to protect the right to vote in our city. There were lots of different ideas and innovative tactics that the city staff and the city clerk's office came up with, and even after, after the elections, they've continued to think of ways to shore up our elections in partnership with the Wisconsin Election Commission. So, you know, right after the election, I thought about what we can start doing as a city to, and as a city council, to make changes to shore up those elections even more. And so, we're putting forward, Councilmember Anderson and I are putting forward a resolution that mostly just congratulates the city and the state for the hard work that they've already done, and really requests that that hard work continues, on things like drive-through voting, a really rigorous mail-in voting program, close attention to detail to voters who might have submitted a ballot that has missing information, and things like that, and so requesting that those things do continue in August, as well as some suggestions for additional ideas, like additional ballot drop boxes, so that voters don't have to rely on the U.S. Postal Service, they can just drop it right in the drop box, and it can be picked up by the cities, as well as increased education for voters on how to register to vote, where to register to vote, where to request your absentee ballot. So, this resolution is a way for us to, to help educate the community on what their options are this fall, in August and September, August and November, to understand what their options are for voting. There are many options, and it is possible to do it safely, and also to ask for new options to be added too. So, like I said, this is about our health, it's about our right to vote, and it's about sort of using our power locally to protect our democracy.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Does council have any questions in regards to the resolution? Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Councilmember Beaton, for your introduction of this and all the work that you put into it, along with Councilmember Anderson. Just wanted to check in about a, it appears to be a typo on the "be it finally resolved" section with, I should refer to the August election rather than the April.
If I may, Council President?
Certainly.
Yes, I appreciate you catching that, Councilmember Gregor. We had several eyes on this resolution, and we didn't catch it, so that, I would, I guess I would like to request a friendly amendment to just change that from August to April.
I guess we'll move the item first, but for now, are there any other questions from council in regards to the resolution? Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe this question is for Ms. Riple, I'm not sure. What, with making that kind of an effort of mailing out absentee ballots to everyone, has there been any research into what the exposure is in terms of increased voter fraud
Do you mean mailing out applications or absentee ballots? Because we're not mailing ballots to everyone. The state is mailing applications to everyone, and everyone that requests an absentee ballot be mailed to them has to provide us photo ID on their first request, so we are verifying that with their request.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. We had a great deal of support in the April election from National Guard. Is that the magic potion that makes this work for us? I mean, will we be able to find that kind of support?
Council, city clerk.
Indications at this point are that we will not have National Guard members for the August election, possibly November, but that's not being indicated. You know, most of the National Guard, they were very helpful, they were, they took on the safety roles, and making sure the social distancing was happening, but we do have city employees that will be taking on those roles as well. It was really a joint effort between city employees, others that volunteered, and the National Guard's people that were there to help. We had probably two National Guards people per site, everybody else there were our regular poll workers and our city employees.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Councilmember Beaton?
I do have one more comment, Council President.
Certainly.
Okay. Yeah, I did want to add just one more thing. I wanted, obviously, I mentioned that this resolution is being seconded by Councilmember Anderson, but I did want to say thanks to Councilmember Bergy as well. She had started this project with me, and did a lot of the initial feedback. She got a little busy midway through and passed after to Councilmember Anderson, but I did want to let, send my thanks to Councilmember Bergy as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. With there being no additional questions, on a motion then by Councilmember Beaton, and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. I guess I'd like to check on the friendly amendment before we pass the resolution. It would be, in the "be it finally resolved," the first paragraph of that, just to change April to August.
Are the movers okay with the friendly amendment?
Yes. Yes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergy.
Thanks. I just had a comment, is that?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make, and thank you to Councilmember Beaton for your thanks on my work on, early in on this process, and I had the same thoughts as Councilmember Beaton, which we figured out a couple of weeks after the election, that we were on the same page, which is why we brought this to the city staff to work on, but I kind of had a front row seat, and seeing our just hardworking and wonderful city clerks and county clerks working on, last April was just a roller coaster of changes, I don't know if you all remember, with Supreme Court rulings and legislature, and things changed a lot, and our elections personnel did an amazing job through it all, and Eau Claire just did a good job, so I wanted to give my kudos to them. I, and I think that we will be able to pull off another good fall election and primary in August. I, with the "be it finally resolved," I obviously wholeheartedly support the resolution, I just want to lift up that I think with the communications, it's important to have it in different languages, as we all know that our monk population is our largest minority population, and so as much, you know, not just having it in English, but making sure that we, and our Hispanic population, all kinds of, our diverse populations, just making sure the communications reach all of our neighbors in Eau Claire. I did get that feedback, even at the elections, the poll sites, that, you know, everything, there was, with the COVID-19, there was a lot of precautions written in English, obviously, but for people that don't, that English isn't the first language, it might have been difficult for them to navigate, you know, because there were signs that asked to make sure that you were feeling well, and other instructions, so if, again, if English is not your first language, it's a little difficult to navigate. So, just in all of our communications, just to remember that, not everyone, you know, English is not their first language for all of us in Eau Claire, so just wanted to lift that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Any other discussion in regards to the resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer. Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jeong.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
And that item passes 10 to 1. Agenda item number 18 is a resolution supporting and encouraging the wearing of masks in the city of Eau Claire during the COVID-19 pandemic. This item is being brought forward by myself and Councilmember Beaton. I will speak to it, or introduce it briefly, and then Health Director Giesi is here also. I know we had some questions earlier, and I thought it would be helpful to have her weigh in if there are questions, and then in which case we can make the motion after we're completed with that. So, again, I want to thank Councilmember Beaton for her input and her support of this resolution and its message. I sincerely believe that we're at a critical point in this pandemic, and every effort and best practice that we can take as individuals to slow the spread of COVID-19 has to be supported. Remaining diligent and staying ahead of the surge can make all the difference to this community as we move forward. I want to, I guess, reach out to our community and thank them, first of all, for all the efforts that they've made these past four months to help slow the spread of COVID-19. I truly believe that it has made a difference, and kept our numbers low, and made us, helped make us a safer and healthier community. I also want to thank the hundreds, maybe even 1,000 residents that have reached out to us over the past 30 hours. It says a lot about this community and your desire to have your voice heard. It is essential to productive governing, and it is appreciated, all of you taking the time to offer your thoughts, and in support or not, and so, again, it is, it is appreciated. With that, if Ms. Giesi, is there, Ms. Giesi?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, to the Council President Weld. I can share a couple of remarks, and certainly answer questions if that's a pleasure of council.
Certainly.
So, first of all, thank you for considering, bringing forward this statement, and for considering how the community can really look at what is a very clear, specific, and significant strategy that's been found across the country, as well as internationally around reducing the spread of COVID-19. A well-fitting cloth-based covering used appropriately, along with all kinds of other strategies that you've heard me talk about many times, like staying home when you're sick, and six feet distance apart will make a difference. There have been a number of recent studies that have really found a significant decrease in disease and death in communities where a face mask strategy is employed. We're seeing that more and more coming forward in more recent studies that have been available. I do want to say that cloth masks are not perfect. They will not prevent people 100% from transmitting COVID-19 or getting COVID-19, but they will make a difference. Again, used appropriately, there is strong research that shows that there is protective factors from the person who may have disease transmitting that in the community. It does make a difference how you wear the cloth-based covering, the different fabrics that are used, the different styles, but there are good studies to show that if you cover your nose and mouth, it will catch those droplets particles that can be expelled when we talk, when we sing, when we cough, when we sneeze, and those particles are how most disease is spread. Cloth masks have been found to be between 50 and almost 90% effective in stopping those droplets being spread out. OSHA is an organization that regulates situations where an N95 mask needs to be used. Those are situations where we're protecting workers from getting disease from out are situations where we're protecting workers from getting disease from outside companies. The masks that we're talking about in this situation, the effectiveness that we look at for masks in this situation are frankly not about protecting me as a mask wearer, but are more about protecting others from me if I happen to have disease. So critically important, OSHA does its job to protect a healthcare worker from being with a COVID-positive patient. We need an N95 mask in that situation to protect that healthcare worker from getting sick from the COVID-positive person. But when I'm out in a community, a cloth-based covering is appropriate to catch droplets coming from me so that I can decrease the spread if I have the disease to others. The most effective way to use cloth-based coverings is if we are all using them. I protect you if I wear it, and you protect me if you wear a cloth-based covering. There are some people that shouldn't wear a mask, those children under the age of two, some very specific but limited health conditions, and some people that have had specific trauma that really do make wearing a face mask not appropriate. But, and those things are real, but they are limited, and not the majority of the people that live in our community. There's also no evidence that wearing a cloth-based covering will make somebody ill. And I know that that is something that has been shared with in some of the conversations, but there is absolutely no evidence that an individual wearing a cloth-based covering would get ill from using that. We do have 346 COVID-positive people that are Eau Claire residents right now. That's the data from last night. We've had at least 10 more cases posted today, so it is a real risk in the community right now. And I really appreciate that the city council is making this simple but important statement to encourage the wearing of face masks. I am happy to answer questions as well, but thank you, President Weld.
Thank you, Ms. Giesi. Are there any questions from council, either from, for myself, or Councilmember Beaton, or Ms. Giesi? Council Vice President Emanuel?
Thank you so much, Council President Weld, and Ms. Giesi, and to Mr. Peters, and to the movers for introducing this important conversation for council and the community. My questions are around a conversation I had earlier in the day with Mr. Peters. So Mr. Peters, when I ask the questions, I'll be going back to the thing that we talked about. So I have three questions. And the first is, I'm wondering if the full requirement to wear masks in our public, in public locations, is being considered as a citywide approach? And if so, how does the city envision this coming to fruition? And then I'll have another question after that.
Ms. Giesi?
So I can certainly start that answer, and if additional responses by Mr. Peters are, are obviously also appropriate. We are having community conversations across Eau Claire County about the use of cloth-based coverings. There has been a group of community leaders talking about that, and we are certainly at very initial stages of looking at options. The best solution in this community is that we have people that see that this is an important strategy and are using cloth-based coverings to protect one another. So we are in conversation. It currently is in our public health order that all public spaces consider policies to have cloth-based coverings required, and we will continue that conversation with partners in the weeks ahead.
City Manager Peters?
Yep, thank you. And in terms of how it would come forward, that is also a topic of, of conversation between the various municipalities in the county, and also the county board and legal council, and as well as the health department to develop the, if it is a recommendation to come forward, what the right and appropriate methodology for that would be.
Council Vice President?
Thank you so much, and thank you to our public health director and city manager. So I'll just reflect back, what I think I understand is that it's being discussed, and it's also being discussed if and how it would be implemented. Do you have a timeline or criteria that you would see us having an answer on that? As you know, we've received hundreds of emails, and I think just the community is wondering, you know, when is this going to happen in Eau Claire, and when, especially as other communities in our state are adopting these requirements? So just, do you have a sense of a timeline?
Either Ms. Giesi or Mr. Peters?
So from a health perspective, we are watching data, and we will be making decisions related to the public health order based on that data. We did just post, actually tomorrow, we'll be posting the most recent metrics. And, you know, we continue to see that there are serious concerns in this community. So that will be one of our primary ways of looking at what strategies we need to employ. Our, our opportunity is to stop the spread of this, the rapid spread of this disease before we overwhelm our healthcare and our public health system. So I'll be watching that data as a primary way to bring forward to the community what should happen.
Council Vice President?
Thank you so much, and thank you, thank you for that. You know, we do not have a physical ball, which we sorely need in this whole situation. Do you have a sense of when a decision would be made? I guess one way or the other, with folks inquiring about this, and knowing that, you know, we've got schools starting in the fall, and I know that's a concern for a lot of employees at the school district, and maybe even parents. So do you have a sense of when a decision may come out?
Ms. Giesi?
Again, thank you for that question. It is a difficult conversation to, you know, again, we're trying to prevent something like we're seeing in the southern part of the state. The current public health order is set to expire next Wednesday. We have an opportunity to consider whether or not a strategy is important at that point in time, obviously. But really, we would be looking again at the data and working with community partners to assess what the need for a mandate may be. We are encouraged that so many community partners really are taking it upon themselves to move forward, use of face masks in all kinds of settings. So it really takes every one of us making the decision. And we will look as a community at the data. I am hopeful that we can keep the disease spread as slow as possible, and then additional mandates may not be necessary. But this is certainly something that is a clear and important strategy that many people see as the next step.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Giesi. I just have a quick, a few questions. I know over the course of this whole pandemic, and then obviously we see, we've seen now within the last 30 hours that we've had hundreds, close to thousands of respond. And prior to the last 30 hours, we've been having conversations with businesses within the area. And one of the main concerns that continues to be brought up is that they feel that they have to enforce and to uphold their responsibility of having customers come in and put a, put masks on. And when they don't, they're forced with having to close down because their, their employees don't feel safe, or aren't able to protect their safety, their safety because of folks not putting on masks. For example, we have a large restaurant industry here, and even though a lot of our restaurant businesses are doing takeout, folks that comes through, especially with Uber Eats or those delivery folks, if they come in and they're not wearing masks, they, they're currently expressing the fact that they don't feel there's enough support to help back up what they're trying to do to protect the, the community. My question is, is the health department doing anything to support these businesses? So they don't feel like they're just bullying the masks to public for putting on a mask.
Ms. Giesi?
Thank you for that question. We are, we are working closely with businesses to support their use of all of the best practices that exist, not only the ones in the order. But it is important that businesses have that support. Chippewa Valley Economic Recovery Task Force, the group that has been put together to really support businesses in successfully engaging with their customers following COVID-19, is actively involved. Many businesses are frankly asking us to consider a face mask mandate because it is a consistency factor. If everybody is having the same standards, there is some level of interest in having that be across the board. We certainly are supporting those businesses that are seeing appropriate ways to use masks now. Our goal is that as business partner and sector partners have questions, that we answer those and walk through the best ways to protect themselves and their staff, as well as protect customers. We know that if COVID-19 comes into a business and people aren't using six feet distance and aren't using all of the strategies that they need to be using to decrease spread, they may not be able to be open because they don't have employees. So we definitely see an important need to support all businesses in really being successful given this disease.
Thank you. And then may I ask another?
Certainly.
And then I just want to recognize that Eau Claire is a, a, we're one of, and are reaching, or being one of the bigger cities. And we do get a high number of folks who lives outside of the city and the county of Eau Claire that travels here for their major purchases, that they need, as far as going to the Eau Claire mall, going to, you know, to Walmart or Sam's Club. And I know professionally, I've worked with folks from Spring Valley that comes all the way here just to do their shopping. And so we do get a high traffic, although we may not be a vacation destination, if you would, like other cities, for example Duluth, or in Dora County, things like that. But we are a hub that attracts folks from outside of our city that may not necessarily have all the measures that we take to make sure that our community is safe. How, how's the health, health department handling that to ensure that with the traffic we get, like folks from Toma, you know, and, or from Thor, or surrounding cities comes here, and not spreading the, you know, the virus into our, our city?
Ms. Giesi?
Thank you for that question. Certainly, the spread of disease, we don't have walls around any community, and that has been part of the challenge of having the inability to have statewide orders and statewide directions. We do work with all of our business partners in our public spaces to have the same standards in place for all of their customers and the people that they provide service to. So whether that individual is coming from within the city of Eau Claire, or outside of the county, or outside of the area, things like making sure that they are actively looking at the customers and employees that may be ill, making sure that they maintain six feet distance from people, making sure that they have the number of people in their business to be at 50% or below. All of those are strategies that will help no matter who the individual is that is coming into the community. We still think it's important to do the right thing in Eau Claire. And while other surrounding counties are not able to have an order, or just able to have the same standards that we have in Eau Claire, we still, as you importantly said, we are a place where people come for healthcare, they come for shopping, they come for education, for a variety of other reasons. And we need to protect people that come here from the rapid spread of disease.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Council President Weld, and thank you, Ms. Giesi. I appreciate your taking the time to share your thoughts and answer questions. You were discussing, when we were discussing, you know, the possibility that there may come a time in the future when there is a recommendation of requiring face coverings. You mentioned that you're working with community partners and looking at various metrics for that. And I definitely appreciate the challenge of these difficult conversations and lots of changing data. I'm wondering if you would be able to comment on what types of metrics or what types of information would be raising the level of concern? When I look at the, all of the red on the response plan now, that's definitely alarming from my perspective of not being a health professional. But I'm just wondering if you're able to talk about, you know, what would, what would be increasing the level of concern in the community?
Ms. Giesi?
Thank you for that question. Certainly, the disease statistics that we are seeing now are concerning. And we really, as a community, need to not have those increases continuing to happen. So the, the dashboard that we use is really looking at positive cases and that increasing trend, as well as the community's spread of disease. And we are looking at those red, yellow, green items, as well as really digging more deeply into how disease is being spread when we look at a strategy like the use of face covering. So with the addition in the last order of the, of the requirements that policies be considered, that was added because we are seeing in the disease that we are having in the community that people are not regularly maintaining six foot distance. People are not regularly making sure that even with mild symptoms, they're staying home. And cloth-based coverings is an additive measure to those risk situations. They're not perfectly protective, but certainly will, will be helpful when they are used. So that's why we added it to the last order. And I think the next iteration, if we move toward recommending a requirement and have a community conversation about that, it would really be based on the type of disease spread we're seeing and the rapidity of it. We're hearing from healthcare leaders across the community that we can't wait too long because of what they are starting to see.
Thank you very much. That helps a lot.
Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Ms. Giesi, and, and to President Weld, and Councilmember Beaton for authoring this statement. I guess my question for Ms. Giesi would be related to, I guess it's in part, you know, the, the, if we have much of an idea of how the wearing of face masks or face coverings has changed over the course of this pandemic, we now have four months, I guess. Has there been any quantifiable way of, of, of measuring the, the, like, percentage of people that are wearing face, face masks? I guess, like, just anecdotally, it seems like the percentage of, at a given store will, is actually seems to be going down. will, is actually seems to be going down. Maybe it's because the people that would, would be wearing masks are just avoiding the store or this places. I know I'm probably in that category. So I guess I'm wondering what kind of baseline we have right now maybe that we can use to measure our progress if indeed the community responds appropriately to, to encouraging masks?
Ms. Giesi.
I guess I'm kind of wondering if there's any information on how that percentage of wearing of masks has changed?
Ms. Giesi.
Again, thank you for that question. We, we have not done qualitative research, look at the actual wearing of masks and would be not either perception or use in our community. There has been that kind of look across the state and nation. Don't have data available to share. We certainly are seeing anecdotally that in our community and even in response to this event, initially, we were not strongly recommending crossface covering as a strategy. It's certainly from a healthcare standpoint, we would talk about surgical masks and N95 masks as protecting the individual. It has been, become much more clear from the data that it does make a difference in this disease for the spread from me to others if I have disease. So I think anecdotally in this community, I do receive feedback from others that compared to many communities in the Twin Cities, for example, we have very low use of face masks. But compared to even some of our neighboring counties, we are doing fairly well with at least having many of our community partners asking customers and requiring their employees to wear crossface masks. But it's not universal. It's a difficult thing to measure and certainly we are seeing people pay attention and we are certainly seeing comments that there is an interest in having that be margin first.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Trying to understand why there's feedback. Ms. Giesi, I wanted to touch base about the mechanism of a, of actually enacting a mandate for face masks in our community. And, you know, we have had so many people reach out to us in the last roughly 36 hours wanting us to go even further than this, this resolution does. And they wanted to ask about how, how, you know, what the mechanisms are in terms of whether the city council can act on that or whether it is through your direction that that would be enacted or is it both? Or is it the health department and under your direction encourages council to take that action or just the mechanisms, mechanisms of it?
I can certainly provide an initial response. We are working through that at the moment with community partners, including the city and the county. We do currently have a public health order that is under the authority of state statute to require action in Eau Claire County. That would be one mechanism that's been utilized. The Madison Game County Health Department Director, Health Officer, under their authority in a public health order mandated face masks last week. Actually, they started on, like, yesterday. The weeks go quickly for me, I apologize. And, and there are other ways also that other communities are moving forward a requirement. So that is part of what we're looking at. And certainly, I, you know, we have a fortunate situation in Eau Claire where we have strong partnerships and we're working together and basing it on public health signs. And I'm confident we'll do that as we move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Giesi. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Gregard.
Thank you, President Weld. Ms. Giesi, maybe just going off of that question from Councilmember Worthman. It comes to mind, you know, obviously we have a city-county health department and the orders that have been on the county level thus far and, but obviously part of the city of Eau Claire goes into the Chippewa County. So I guess I'm just kind of wondering, you know, from a, if, if a mandate, some sort of mandatory mask-wearing order would to come forward, whether by vote or, or by executive function, is there, is there a preference to be city and county in order to make sure we're covering our bases or like how does, what do, what are, I guess, you thinking about the various jurisdictions involved here?
Again, that would be part of what we would work through as we talked about the next step. We currently have an order that covers the entirety of Eau Claire County, including all the municipalities, the villages, all of the jurisdictions within the county. Because communicable disease has been handled by the state historically as a county-level disease, so we have, if we get a case in the city of Eau Claire that is actually a Chippewa County case for any disease, those are transferred over to Chippewa County for follow-up. We did make the decision for the current order that the order again is within the Eau Claire County jurisdiction, not including Chippewa County.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Law.
Thank you, President Weld and Ms. Giesi. When you mentioned about having, working with partner, I do want to remind that if you could put the Mon community HME part of your list that they're, that they involve with your, the decisions of helping get the information out back to the Mon community because of, I know that we, I mentioned early the lack of language in this community that we are putting everything in English. We have large Mon family in town who are, don't have the way to communicate to or knowing what had been going on. And I think maybe it's a good idea that you put the Mon HME part of your list and have them involved. And so bring that information back to the Mon community because those, the only way that I think that we can reach out to the community that in, in Mon language so they know what's going on. And I, I know that the virus had been increased tremendously in this community, but I, I've been out there, but a lot of the Mon community that they have no clue what we are talking about week after week. So I think that maybe encourage you to put the, the Mon HME on your list and for the next conversation, have them involved. Thank you.
And I really appreciate that input. We have worked to provide materials in the Mon language and done video in Mon language, but we have work to do. And I appreciate that feedback and we can continue to work on that and make sure that there is clear information readily accessible to all people in the community.
Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Ms. Giesi, for answering the ample of questions that we are throwing at you. I have a quick follow-up. If and when the health department, based on the data that we received, does pass a mandated mask-wearing ordinance, do you, would you have any prediction of how long that would last or is it indefinitely until the numbers go, are down? Just your thoughts on that? So you know what to expect?
Thank you for that question. I, as you all likely can imagine, I wish I had a crystal ball that could tell us when we can get to the point where community disease spread is not as big of a risk. We are seeing people now that are, you know, seriously ill with COVID-19 that are our community friends and neighbors. We, we know that we are waiting for a vaccine. None of us are protected against COVID-19 right now. The hope for a vaccine is as early as early winter, but we know that that is still in the works. This is, you know, this is a 100-year pandemic event and I think part of the challenge is we don't have as clear a pathway as we would like to have, like we do with other diseases. My goal with wearing of crossface covering would be that as long as we need to protect others from potential transmission, that we would keep in place that expectation. And it may last for a number of months.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. Ms. Giesi, I'm wondering if this would become a mandate, which is not what this statement is asking, how do you perceive the enforcement happening?
So our goal with all of the mandates that we have in Eau Claire County continues to be focused on education, focused on working with businesses and individuals to assure that they understand and are able to meet the requirements that are so important to protect from spread of disease. Our experience in Eau Claire is that most people in this community want to do the right thing once they understand the importance of it. I spent, for example, Saturday morning talking to a group of individuals at Half Moon Beach about an event that was happening. And once I talked to them, they very quickly strategized how to make that event safer. And that's been our experience across this community for the most part. We, we would be looking at, again, if this moves forward as a community strategy at a partnership with all of our businesses and our public spaces to really talk through how to make this an expectation. So education would be the start, making sure that access to face masks was not a barrier because that's also critically important. And, and then where there is, in those very small cases where there was not willingness to meet the standard that was set, there is a mechanism that we currently have for citation.
May I have a follow-up?
Certainly.
Thank you, Ms. Giesi. I, I just have another comment and would like to just hear your response to that. In several of the emails, there, it seemed like it didn't take very much to people go from recommendation to, you know, mandating forcefully. But there were some comments about people that did have traumatic experience from having their face covered or they had legitimate reasons. I'm wondering if there's, if we could at least entertain a conversation about a button or a badge that would identify people as being, "I wish I could comply, but I can't wear a mask so that they don't feel like they're a bad neighbor." Is that in a realm of possibility?
Again, thank you for the question. It is important for us to consider all of the opportunities we may have with a face covering mandate and some of the challenges. We are not the first community that would be approaching that if we decided to have that community strategy take place. And we have a lot to learn from other places. There are many ways that this is being addressed across the U.S. And certainly, people that have experienced trauma because of, and, and that is connected to the potential trigger of a face mask would, would be part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Law, did you have another question?
Yes. Thank you, President Weld. Ms. Giesi, I want to ask you one more question so I can make my mind. The case, the positive case have been increased tremendously in the last two, three weeks. Would you have any data show from those case that where people have the virus from the most that they, they got from? Do you have any data that can help me more understanding say that we are supporting this?
So again, an important question for us to understand how disease is being spread in the community. Of course, it's a difficult thing to pinpoint exactly. And what we are generally seeing is that in situations where there is close contact, closer than six feet, there is, there is transmission of disease. So we are seeing in some of our cases, family-to-family member contact and transmission. We are seeing in post-work environments where there is also spread of disease when typically it's been more likely related to break times and after-work activities, but where people are connected in close proximity after-work setting or during break time. And we are seeing cases where it is not clear how someone got the disease. So those situations, about a third of our newer cases, are ones where the individual can't readily identify where they got the disease. Those are the particular situations where something like a crossface covering is an appropriate way to consider preventing the transmission in at least a partial way. Again, it doesn't fully prevent spread of disease, but the studies are clear that it will decrease spread in a community if we are doing it broadly across the community. So again, we, we learn every day about this disease. It's one of the challenges that I know we all experience is because this has really been about six months that we have been working through exactly how is this disease spreading and what are the best strategies to prevent it. So we're, we're still fairly new at it, but what we are seeing locally is that in situations of close contact, disease is spread and there is general spread where it's not clear. And those are particularly those instances where importantly, face masks could make a difference.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Giesi. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld, and thank you, Ms. Giesi as well. I think one of the things that's concerning to me is we're looking around our community, we're looking around our country, and we're noticing that states that opened prematurely and, you know, folks quote unquote went back to life as normal or resumed a lot of their normal activities are showing huge spikes in the number of cases. And, you know, while we're a smaller community, it definitely looks to me that we in Wisconsin and in Eau Claire are one of the communities that, you know, opened prematurely and have a high risk for seeing a much larger and have a high risk for seeing a much larger increase in, in our COVID cases. You know, and I, I'm not a health expert, but I am someone who can read the news and understand what's going on around our state and around our country. And why I read this is that it's concerning to me that when we know that enacting, you know, a mandatory mask order would prevent any potential spike, it's sort of one of those things as an elected official that, you know, I'm, I'm paying attention to people saying, please, you know, pleading with us, please do the things that are necessary to even have that happen. And I guess I'm just sharing that with you as someone who is receiving, you know, hundreds of emails of people asking for that, that I do feel that responsibility to, to do what I can to act. So, that's, yeah, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any other questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you again, Ms. Giezzi, City Manager Peters, for your, your input and, and time answering our questions. And again, all your work that you do for this community, you and your staff. If there are no other questions in that regard, I'd like to, on a motion by myself, Council President Weld, and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, I would like to move Agenda Item Number 18. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. I would, I really appreciate, relish this kind of conversation about very important values and behaviors in our community. But I also want to honor the, the voices that have a dissension. Right now, we're, in our community, having a really broad conversation about minority voices and wanting to have everybody at the table. So, I simply want to say that this is not a unanimous conversation. Not everyone is on the same page at this point. In the emails that I had the time to literally read and, and keep track of, there were 72 percent, so I, I actually read and documented 265 of them, and it's, my percentages are really close to some of the summaries that we have from city staff. But 72% of that group said, yes, they wanted a recommendation. So, they were saying, yes, I think that it's important that we wear masks out of respect for our neighbor. Out of those yes answers, 40% of them, almost half, thought that the recommendation should be stronger, and they actually used the word mandate. It wasn't everyone, but it was half of those that were in favor. But then there were 10% that just said, you should have a choice. They weren't willing to weigh in yes or no. And then 17% were very emphatic that a recommendation or a mandate were not appealing to them. And I think that there are a number of people nationally, regionally, and certainly locally, that see these kinds of conversations as being an overreach, that they want to feel that they have a legitimate choice. So, I, I, I do wear a mask in public. I glove when I'm in places where I have to pick up things. But just as an example, this morning when I was at the laundromat, I had my gloves on and my mask on, and it was an unreasonably early hour. And there were four other people there. They, none of them had masks on. And as I left and engaged a young couple, they said that they were in Eau Claire because they had been living with an aging parent, and they were, had been COVID-positive. They said that they had been passed by the county and were fine. But it's those kinds of circumstances that I think we're really talking about here, where everybody is just going about their daily business, and you just want to be as safe as you can be. So, from, from just that, that small experience that I had today, I want to both appreciate the 17% of the people that really feel that they want to make their own choice. And if they feel it is medically necessary, I think they should be able to identify themselves as supportive, but not wearing a mask. But then I also want to join in support of the statement that I think that if it's possible for me, I definitely will be wearing a mask. Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you, Council President. And, and I, I want to thank you, Council President, for, for authoring this resolution and, and asking me to be a part of it. I do have a statement, obviously, of support because I am a co-sponsor. In the time between when this resolution was written last week by the Council President and myself, and today when we vote on it, 40 more of our neighbors in Eau Claire County have tested positive for COVID-19. In that time, 500 more have tested positive, positive in the state of Wisconsin, and 15 more have died in six days. That's in six days. Many of these deaths were completely preventable. Mothers, fathers, daughters, sons, grandmothers, grandfathers, friends, partners, people young and old, those with compromised immune systems, and those without, all people who will never be hugged again by those that they love. In this time, it can be a challenge to know how to cope with what is happening around us and also make such sacrifices to take care of our community. But as cases continue to rise in Wisconsin, and, and our state became the, the state with the fastest COVID spread in the nation last week, we must listen to science and health professionals. We must stay home when we can. We must keep our distance from others, and we must wear masks. Wearing a face mask is recommended by, is a recommendation made by our local city-county Health Department, the Center for Disease Control, and virtually every mainstream health organization across the nation. We know that masks, if worn by everyone, vastly slow the spread of COVID-19 and could allow us to continue a more normalized business operation. It could allow our kids to go back to school in the fall, and it could allow us to escape a social isolation that can be hard for our mental health. Just like we do when we put on a seatbelt or when our restaurants follow food safety rules, wearing a mask is something that no one loves to do, but we do it because it protects our health and the health of those around us. Wearing a mask is a matter of health, it's a matter of economy, and it's a matter of our children's education and their future, and our future. I remember back in March when news of the pandemic started. It was horrible and scary for everybody, but I also remember being in awe of how unified our country was. We have lived in a country and a state that have been so divided for so long, but in March, we were all in this together. We were paying attention to health science. We were following recommendations to keep each other safe. We were donating and volunteering to ensure that those that fell especially hard on, that those who fell especially hard had the community to catch them. And it hurts me to see now that we are divided. It hurts me that in such a beautiful and loving time when our country showed who we can truly be, that our nation's leader drove, leaders drove a wedge between us for their own gain. This is not the time for division, and we will pull through this by pulling together the community. This is, again, our time to show up for our community. This is how we show love for one another. And I know that we have it in us. Over 700 people took the time out of their day to express their opinion on this matter by emailing the seven, the city council. And no matter their opinion, I know that those emails started from a place of love for this community. And now it's time to turn that into real action and put on our masks for the good of each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. I want to thank you again, and Councilmember Beaton, for having the foresight to bring this forward. It's an important conversation and one that I am assured everybody in our community is having. Most of the time, I think evaluating public input is probably the highest. And in COVID-19, I think it's a rare and important acknowledgement that for me, I have to look at the data. I have to look at our public health best recommendation that would persuade me to support any action that we are taking. And I have full confidence and full trust in our public health leadership and my full appreciation to the leadership as well. I understand that today, this is not a mandate. This is a strong encouragement to say, council will be helping to demonstrate that we'll be wearing this mask in a cloth-based covering. And I want to assure our public health leadership and our community that if a mandate comes forward, I will be there. My family will be there to support it, all trying our very best. Last and not least, I was really struck by some comments that one of our national political leaders shared that I normally do not see eye to eye on, and that is Mr. Mitch McConnell. And I just want to list up a couple of things he shared yesterday in the press. He shared that the coronavirus is not involved in American politics. And also spoke about that some people in our country are trying to politicize mask-wearing. And I really appreciate that leadership, even though we might have different ideology on, on maybe some big-picture issues, on this issue, which is probably going to be the biggest issue of our lifetime, we do have leadership who are helping to situate that discussion and what the right thing is to do. And so, I will definitely be supporting this. And as we move forward, I think it's important that we continue to look at the data, we continue to support our public health leadership that is doing an exceptional job, and continue to support each other because this is hard, one of the hardest things we'll ever go through in our entire lives as a community, a country, and as a world.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. I also, as Councilmember Christopherson shared, I, I tried to read all of our nearly 800 emails today. It was quick, quick, but I tried to at least glance at them as they came through fast and furious for the last 24 or 30 hours. And I paid attention to, you know, the dissenting, the, the people that don't agree with this resolution. And so, and a lot of times, they spoke of concern about businesses. And, and to that, I guess, I just want to respond that, you know, local businesses have reached out to me wanting a mandate, as our, as Ms. Giezzi stated as well tonight. In fact, their employees have been verbally assaulted, and I can't even repeat what they have been called. It was quite awful. And food has been dumped because people have been so angry about the masks, even employees wearing masks, not that they have to wear a mask, but the employees are wearing masks. And they feel like if there is a mandate, it would just level the playing field, field a little bit, and their employees can feel safer at work, which I feel really, really spoke to me. I also want to mention that our, the U.S. chamber and then our local chamber support mask-wearing, I think, because they hear from our local businesses and businesses across the nation that they do want to level playing field just to make things more fair and to protect the employees. People also mentioned that there's no evidence about health, or they maybe mentioned medical professionals that say that mask-wearing does not work. We heard tonight from our, from Ms. Giezzi that that, that is not true, that there is evidence that it does work. Also, we had a letter in our council inbox from the Mayo Clinic Health System supporting math, mask-wearing. And also, I saw a letter from American Hospital Association, the American Medical Association, the American Nurses Association. All support mask-wearing along with physical distancing and washing your hands, which we all hear about. Something else I just want to address that some people mentioned that Eau Claire County only has, only has one death. To that, I just want to respond that there's other consequences besides death of this virus. There could be long-term effects, which we have no idea because this is a new virus, a new disease. I even was thinking about, you know, you look at pregnancy. We've only had this, obviously, someone is pregnant for nine months. This has only been around in our community for four to five months. We have no idea if someone were to get pregnant in the last few months, we don't know how this impacts the pregnancy or the newborn baby. There's so many, I'm not saying that there will be impacts, but we just do not know. And there's other consequences besides death that we need to be aware of, or even long-term health effects. You know, you look at someone that gets a chicken pox as a child, later on, they can get, you know, shingles, which is a very painful. I don't know if it's a disease or a virus, but probably a virus. Also, other consequences besides death and health effects are just lost wages for people, people that, you know, do get sick and they cannot go to work, then they cannot, for whatever reason, may not be able to get paid and support their families. For business owners, and they might lose employees, and they might have to shut down their businesses, which I've also heard. So, there's other consequences besides death, which is also very horrible, that we need to look at the big picture here. So, with all of these reasons, you know, that people brought up, and I appreciate the conversation, I just, just really firmly support mask-wearing, looking at the data and our local businesses, our health reasons, and so many. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Councilmember Jean.
Thank you, Council President. I want to say thank you to Council President and Councilmember Beaton for bringing this resolution. Although today's resolution is a recommendation and encouragement for citizens of Eau Claire to put on a mask, I want to share that if and when the, the Health Department, city and county Health Department, does come with, come up with a mandate that I would fully support. And, you know, just a little over six weeks ago, I lost a friend in her early 30s to COVID-19. It was very unexpected. She was very healthy. And I know throughout the conversations that, you know, folks would say, well, she must have underlying health issues. And I feel like, you know, it, it's really hard with the COVID, with COVID-19. We don't know what we don't know. And if I could protect one person, whether they have underlying health issues or not, it is our duty to, to protect one another. My brother is in the military, he's in the Marines, and they, they tell us all the time that they don't ever leave a fallen soldier behind. It's the same concept with all community members. We should not leave those individuals who have, you know, asthma. My mother has asthma. My husband has respiratory issues. And it's really crucial, my kids do not like wearing masks, but to protect their dad, to make sure that a year from now, they're able to see their grandma, they're still able to play with their dad, that they wear a mask, that I wear a mask to protect him and protect other folks, protect my neighbors from having to go through COVID. And just six weeks ago, seeing one of my beloved family members pass away when it's so preventable, it is so surreal. And it's not, until it's so close to reach and it's within your own family, it, it's really hard to see. You just think of the outside picture. And I want everybody to, to know that I really appreciate the feedback, all the opinions from both sides, knowing that we do have folks who have asthma and they can't, they feel like they can't wear a mask. But we also want to make sure that we're protecting them. My mom is one, and she religiously wears a mask, even though it may be a little harder. But she knows that by wearing a mask, she's not only protecting herself, she's protecting others. And being unable to breathe for maybe 30 minutes to an hour as she steps into the store is better than lying in a hospital bed for a month than my, you know, my relatives went through and then maybe not even knowing if they're going to come out alive, like how she did not come out alive. So, I do want to share that, that I will be fully support because it's my duty to be protecting every one of my neighbors and everyone, every citizen in Eau Claire. Just want to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Jean. Councilmember Lor.
Thank you, President Welf, and thank you, Council Beaton, for bringing this resolution to us tonight. I also want to echo that I will be supporting these, wearing masks. I have three, my kid, my sons, my daughters, and my other sons, who are working in health field, and they have encouraged that masks is to help protect this virus. So I haven't seen, seen the, we are the country right now that are going in the wrong directions at that, like today. We have sixty thousand per day COVID-19 in this country, that we are, now we are going to a war on situation like, and we still continue going up. And I will be in Eau Claire. I compare like the last three, four weeks, we have a very low number, since that people don't pay attention, bad behavior in this community, and the positive cases have increased tremendously. And I think that as leaders in this community, I understand that both sides, that, I have read through almost four hundred email, too. I understand that both sides, that, you know, is not supporting because of the thing that, and they think that we play politician in here, and I think that it's not that true. I think that the virus is no cure. And we, as leaders, fathers, family members, community leaders, I think we need to protect the people we are around it. And as a leader in this community, I think that we need to look out to the majority in this community that saved a family, the life. I have reached out to a family, reached out to me, said, John, you know, you need to vote yes on this, because I have no, I have saved all my life, and now I have my husband in the hospital for a month, and I will be, I have no insurance, and I will be paying all my saving life into this. And then you need to make sure that this is happening in this community, and will not happen to other families in the community. So I am going to supporting this, and I, even my kid, I'd say, Dad, you know what? It's really important that this virus, no treatment. I have a doctor, I have pharmacy, and that, I talk to them every day, and this is a very, very serious disease. So I think that's, I will be supporting this tonight. So thank you, President Welf, and thank you, Council Beaton, for bringing this to us tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Lor. Councilmember Beaton.
Yes, Council President. Actually, I need to put my hand down, never mind. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Welf, and thank you for introducing this, and Councilmember Beaton. Yeah, really, you know, be planning to support this resolution, and I'm hoping that we also can continue this conversation to, and research what other communities are doing in order to look at a mandate. I think, you know, the direction of the feedback we've gotten is largely interested in seeing more leadership from our local community on this issue of mask-wearing, even though it's, you know, a small part of what needs to be done, it's a very important part, and it's really a very practical solution that I think almost everybody can very easily do to stop the spread. You know, obviously, as Mitch mentioned earlier, the Eau Claire Area Chamber of Commerce is asking people to wear masks, and asking businesses to make that easy, and there are businesses giving away masks, yeah, most of them, but I've been to, we're at now, as of today, we have the highest, in the state of Wisconsin, have the highest number of new confirmed cases ever. Almost this entire last week has broken the records. We were today confirmed almost a thousand new cases. And obviously, we look at the country, and we're not doing well. We lack leadership on the national level, and our state legislature on the state level, and our Supreme Court have not allowed for leadership in the state of Wisconsin. So it's really up to us and local communities to really respond and look at, look at this as something that is our responsibility to the whole country. We all know people and have family around in different parts of the country. And my brother was in New Orleans, and that was one of the cities that was hardest hit early on, and we didn't know much about the virus at that point. We know a lot more now. I have, just last week, I lost a family member to COVID-19, my uncle, who is in his sixties. And, you know, he lived in Nevada. So it really matters what is happening in communities across this country, and what they're willing to do to protect people, because there may be people in another state even that are dependent upon us protecting our citizens and visitors to this community. This is really the most basic step we can take to encourage wearing of masks, and there's going to need to be additional steps further if the community does not respond appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I just want to briefly thank DAF, and also Councilmember Beaton, and Council President Welf, for bringing this important issue forward. I'm also really grateful to all the folks who spoke last night, who contacted via email or other means. And I just want to reiterate that I think that it sounds like there is consensus in the conversation, that everyone who contacted us, regardless of their opinion, wants to see a safer and healthier community. And I think that at this time, you know, it can feel like we're living in these unprecedented times, there's a lot of changes happening, and it can feel like calling, encouraging something like face coverings is another thing that is unprecedented. But I don't think that's actually true. I think that if you look, for instance, a number of years ago, we banned indoor cigarette smoking, because once again, you know, the air we breathe is something that connects all of us, and what one person does impacts people beyond themselves, and our health, it's another situation where our health choices aren't just about individuals, they're about other members in the community. And I think that what makes this challenging, I think, is that was a long conversation and a long process, but we're in a situation where we have to be very clear and very public about the fact that covering, people covering their faces will help stop the spread of a dangerous disease, and we need to communicate that message quickly, because time is of the essence. And the longer it takes to change behaviors, the more people will become sick and possibly die, and the greater the economic impacts will be. So I'm strongly in support of this statement encouraging the wearing of masks or face coverings, that we can protect other people, and I'm very grateful and supportive of the work of our city-county health department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Gregor, did you have another?
Sorry, I didn't mean to have it up.
No problem. Is there any other discussion? I would just close with, I'm grateful for the council's support, and I think we're all grateful for that. I think this community is grateful as well, and obviously, they have been there through, you know, years and years and years of growth and change, and together, we've seemed to always keep moving forward, and to be caring, and to be conscious of each other, and really, that's what we're asking now, is that we agree to wear these masks, and we agree to take these measures and best practices for each other. And really, that is the message. If there is no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor.
Aye.
Welf.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Another item passes unanimously. We have two ordinances for introduction. And Agenda Item Number Nineteen is an ordinance rezoning a property located on the west side of Babcock Street from R4 to CBDP, and to adopt the general development plan with site plan for LA Phillips Senior Center. Agenda Item Number Twenty is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1,000 West Clermont Avenue from C2H to C3P to adopt the general development plan with a site plan for commercial building. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these three ordinances, or these two ordinances, this evening? I do not see any hands being raised, which brings us to announcements. City Manager Peters.
No announcements, other than we still have a work session scheduled after this, so.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from council? Seeing none, I would just like, well, I do not see any other. There is no objection from council. We are adjourned. Those of you on council, we would like to start this work session at seven o'clock, seven minutes. Everybody wants to take a break, and we'll be back here shortly. Thanks, everybody.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire.